Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the July 18th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Special Budget Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and pagers and other electronic communication devices. Our agendas are located at the back of the chambers. And there is speaker request forms at the back of the room, and you can add them in to Holly Hennings if needed. At this meeting, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Laster.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda.
移到
Take it.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Hurrying none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a time that we scheduled for a special budget hearing. Some requests were made by the commissioners to gather some information and bring back some stuff. I want to commend Auditor Cindy Moller for taking the time and sitting down with both the newly elected and the commissioners to go over some of the budget. And for the presentation that she, the paperwork that she compiled that we have in front of us today. The list of stuff that we have that was requested to bring forward is any and all non-mandated items and services, including statutory and authorized items and services, reduction of other services, statutory required or not, other board commissioner priorities, changes and reductions, reserve calculations, healthcare trust, support and infusion, jail bonds, concourse items, Dakota Plains Legal Services was added, Fairground Projects, we got the FTE requests, and we have the wage study implementation. I do want to take the time and moment to applaud the staff for their hard work this year of working on their budgets and doing their narratives in the budget. You know, doing these comparisons, you were directed to bring, bring back your budget with mandated and unmandated requirements, and you guys did an excellent job of providing that information so that the commissioners could go through that. So at this time, is there any further information that the commissioners feel that they didn't get that they would like to request? I'd like to start that from the beginning, so if we can get it before the end of the meeting, we can do that until we get through the process. Okay? So I think what, you know, what we've typically done in the past is gone, gone through FTEs, whether we yea or nay, but I think we, we've got some people that probably need to speak on stuff that came forward, which would probably be, we'd like to hear from the sheriff's office. Laura, you sent a letter in today too, also with a request or some changes. We'd like to probably hear from you and from buildings and grounds also. So I don't know who wants to go first.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
By our agenda, unless something's changed and I missed it, it looks like we had items from the public first before the budget discussion.
My gosh, you're absolutely right.
Figured we'd let the public give us input too, if they had any. I mean, I have a letter here for me.
We do have, thanks for pointing that out. I was going straight into it. I had no speaker request forms, but we did get one online, and it's from Commissioner, from a citizen from Mr. Laster's ward, so he wanted it read into record. So at this time, I'll do a public comment first and turn it over to Mr. Laster.
All right. This one came in. I didn't even see it in my email. I'm guessing it came to the commission one, so, and he asked for it to be read into the record. So this is from Bruce Meister, and his note is, "I don't know if, I am too late to comment, but I am not able to make it to your meetings, so I thought I would write, I would write, and yes, I would like to, would like a reply. You all know the situation in our country at this time. Everything costs a small fortune. The reason for this is the uncontrolled wasteful spending. The burden is placed on all of us taxpayers because the government has no money. The government includes federal, state, county, and city. You are all wasteful. I understand that money is needed for the operation of this country, but the people, most of us anyway, are not made of money, and it is extremely important that you do not waste any of it. I am retired on a fixed income and stretched to the limit. Every time I turn around, something costs more, whether, whether it be expenses to survive or taxes, or I just do not have the money for those increases. And I just, oh, and I just don't have the money for those increases. I was told long ago, and it is true, that you need to watch every penny throughout your life. Do not waste one cent. The dollars will take care of themselves. We are wasting money. You don't watch the pennies you're wasting because it's only a penny, and besides, it is not coming out of your pockets, so you do not care. You are in an elected position and placed there by taxpayers with the expectation to be good stewards for the people that put you there. In an awful lot of cases, that does not happen because a person of influence, friend, donated money to get me, donated money to get me elected or just talked into it, convinced you that it's okay to spend the money because the taxpayers have bottomless pockets. That is not true. We do not have bottomless pockets. And the way taxes are going up every time I turn around, I am very concerned about being taxed out of my home because my income does not change. That is on you. Do you think this is okay? Now stop wasting our money." That's the end of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Laster. So as I was saying before we do, we got a list, items that we want to discuss. Is there anything else that we want to add on that list to, put on the list for discussion?
Chair. For me, it's just the wage scale because I don't think it's ready to be implemented. After looking at this current positions and the change positions, I don't think the public had time to vet this, let alone myself.
That is on the list.
I think, I think the wage scale also, where you have it on that discussion, some of the people on this got, that were in departments actually raising themselves up as department heads, which already got raises, and there's just a lot of concerns in there that I believe need to be talked about on the wage scale itself. And I don't think the public in general had a full discussion on this wage scale at this point, because I know, and I appreciate all the work being done on it. I appreciate that you met with commissioners on this, but I don't think you vetted with the public. The changes that, that were done on this wage scale, and not that it's wrong or right, but let the public also discuss and be able to see these job descriptions and these changes on the wage scale. Because even when you look at the percentages, and I know it's not supposed to be a discussion, but I don't want people to start freaking out that I think the wage scale sucks. I'm saying the bottom line is, you have 73% on that wage scale. They're getting 23 cents to $1.99.
I don't mean to interrupt, Deb, but it is on our list for, that's going to be a discussion item.
But, but I just didn't want them to freak out that I think, you know, because if you say wage scale and say a few things, people think that I just think the whole thing's bad. I think that needs to be worked on more. So that's why I appreciate that you let me say a few more words on that and that we're having that discussion.
I'll, I'll go through this, list the items that we have so far. Any and all mandated items, services, including statutory authorized items and services, reduction in other services, statutory required or not, other board commission priority, changes and reductions, others, you can add that on. The reserve calculation, I think Cindy can touch on that, she talked with us. The healthcare trust infusion, jail bond dollars added for 2025 is on there. Concourse items, which is a 35 to 29, including provisional budget. Dakota Plains, we've got a letter on that. Additional FTE, the Fairground Projects. And then we go through the FTEs and the wage study implementation. That's what I have on our list that staff was directed to work with. I think we worked with a lot of these. So I think what I'll do to move forward is we'll wait probably to the FTE requests till the, thanks. We'll kind of go, is there anything else that the commission would like to add to this list for specific discussion?
I guess, Mr. Chair, I won't know if there's anything specific, depending on how some of the discussions go. I guess, the first thing I will say, I do appreciate some of the departments that already gave us their withdrawals and stuff. I mean, at least they're looking at it, they understand the situation that we're in. And I'm not saying that I don't want to call anybody out on it, but I want to say thank you. I know some of y'all really do need this, these bodies, or you feel like you need them to implement what you want to at full capacity and capabilities, but I also thank you for looking at it, for figuring out, helping us figure out where we need to start trimming out so that we can make the best decisions for the, for the county. So, thank you.
So at this time, what I'll do is I'll call on Cindy to kind of go over what you provide us, options one and two, explain probably the reserves a little bit for the public. If you could, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. I did go back and revise some of the revenues, and you all have a memo on that. The indigent legal service reimbursement, we got a letter from the state that told how they were going to disperse those funds that were set aside, and so that we were able to increase that estimate of what we will get in '25. And we will actually be getting some this year as well, so that'd be nice. The sheriff had done a recalculation on the detox safe bed, so there was a little decrease in that. Annette and I discussed the, the interest and where the interest rates have been, how much interest we've been getting, and we did go back and she increased that. And along with that, I increased the operating transfer from the other funds because the interest that she earns is then dispersed into the other funds by their fund balance or by their cash balance. And then there are certain funds that do not keep their interest, that comes back to the general fund. So I increased that. And then we did have a correction to growth that brought in a little bit more potential new tax dollars. So using the original budget with the FTEs or without the new FTEs, excuse me, getting myself confused, we're looking at a 14.4% reserve in the unassigned fund balance. And as I had explained in a memo earlier, when the bonding company is looking at things, they include your unassigned and assigned fund balances. So my next calculation took the unassigned fund balance and the assigned to next year's budget fund balance. That assigned to next year's budget comes from what is known as cash applied on the means of finance. So I calculated it using that, and that brings us up to 27%. If you use all of the unassigned or all of the assigned and the unassigned, we'd be looking at about a 29% reserve. In looking at the, the ratings for the bonding, if you want to maintain that double A rating, you want to be between 25 and 35%. So looking at those numbers, taking all of that into consideration going forward, I think we're fine with that. I did the same thing by adding all of the FTEs, and it sounds like that's changed, so I'm not going to go through that since we know that's going to be a change.
Yeah.
I talked about the potential for additional growth, as there's some tips that are going to be dissolving, and the city let me know of two more, so we're looking at a, at a potential of another million dollars in additional tax revenue that we could take in '25. So that would then bring our unassigned fund balance up to 16.77. And then I have the others there too, with the unassigned and assigned to next year's budget being at 28, and then unassigned and all assigned, bringing us up to 30. And there again, that's without the new FTEs.
Okay. And then we do have August 6th and August 20th of dates for special, dates for the budget discussions. We do the provisional, we can, need to do the provisional today and then?
Unless you want to hold another special meeting in July, yes, you would need to approve an option for provisional today. And then within that motion, we would designate your two meetings, your regular meetings in August for budget discussion prior to the actual budget hearing in September.
Okay. So I just wanted to get that clear. Is there any questions for Cindy?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Cindy, you know, I've only been up here for three years, so this is my fourth budgeting on here, and the last three, we've been pretty consistent at doing it, the, you know, estimated unassigned fund balances. And now we're looking at potentially changing it. I mean, I understand to some extent your, your reasonings, because we've sat down there and talked about it. But I guess I find it kind of odd because we're in a, in a pinch year, or we're in a tighter year, and we didn't meet our goal, then we're going to change the way we're going to do things and how we're going to look at our debt ratio, or how we're going to look at our, our reserve balance and all that kind of stuff. And I don't think that's necessarily appropriate because we can't make everything fit where we want it to fit based on the way we've been doing it for the last several years. So I'm not comfortable changing the way we do it. I think we should stay on the same way we've done it, and I think that's a good conversation piece with the new commissioners that are coming in, so it doesn't seem like we're trying to cram something down just because it's not meeting the criteria where we want it. I mean, it shows that we overspent last, you know, for what we projected, and then just to change the formula, change the way we're looking at it, I don't think is very prudent, at least, you know, since we've been doing it for several years before that. That's just my input on that, Mr. Chair. Am I, am I understanding what you're saying? We are changing the way we're looking at it. The impact's probably not significantly different, but it sure does look like that whenever we had a conversation, when we've had conversations in the past three budget hearings, that we want to be in that 18% of unassigned fund balances.
My reason for looking at other options is, in the 20%, it's like I always said, I'm very conservative. I wanted to make sure that all of those assigned fund balances are, are pretty much tucked away. For bonding purposes, they don't consider that. And so I wanted to bring that out, let the board know that there aren't other options. It's totally up to the board if they want to just consider the unassigned, or if they want to look at using some of the assigned for their goal percentages. But the biggest thing is to maintain that unassigned and assigned between that 25 and 35%.
What happens if we go below 25%?
It could affect our bond rating.
So this is kind of a safety measure to protect us, because when you look at the numbers, that 16.77% with the, with the estimated new growth keeps us at about 30% based on that calculation, which is a good cushion just in case we have some craziness that happens. I mean, last year, we, you know, we were projecting, and I don't remember the exact number, you probably know it right off the top of your head, what we were projecting for 2024's budget, we were going to be about 18%, 19%, somewhere around there. And then we're, based on the numbers, we're only going to be at 16%. So that kind of gives us an extra built-in cushion to make sure that we don't impact that bond rating, and that's kind of what I'm, you know, I like, I like being conservative in there, in my opinion. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, I, I appreciate knowing the whole story because I, I didn't quite know that. So that, that between the signed and unassigned and the explanation, and I really appreciate that because I was probably on the same track as Travis until I sat down and talked to you and got the whole understanding of the big picture. And so I appreciate that.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So I know Julie had assigned and unassigned, but she didn't use that in our percentages for our budgets to raise reserves, to make it look like we have 27%. I understand the, the bond rating and things and why she did it that way, because we wanted to keep the bond ratings up, but with Travis on the same thing. If you're overspending or you're overspent, and then we're trying to find options of that overspending, and we already know wage scale and buildings are the main area, because we already know that, because when you look at the stuff in the budgeting and the wage scale and the things that are done and the papers that I've read, I believe a lot of them, I know there's a cushion in there because when you have $1.2 million, 800 absorbed last year, and I do have the papers that say absorbed, and almost a half a million this year in these budgets that are being absorbed from wage scales that already have been implemented, implemented before the 3.6, there's, that's a lot of cushion in between. And that, I don't know if people use some of their assigned, that they were going to do other projects, or where that came from, but to me, how we're using the money and how we have used the money in the past, I think needs to change. Again, that's a lot of money, 1.2, and then there's other money that when we did voting on stuff for wage increases, using a wage comparable and a market analysis, and we came out of the executive session, whether it was right or wrong, that still increased the budgets as well, and that's not added on the 1.2. So how did we absorb all that and still have a budget shortage at, at this time and still have a 3.6 area that we have to implement for wage scale? And also, when you think about it, I know Brian's looking ahead because he's looking at the compression. We haven't looked at compression, and when I was looking at the papers, we're 2.3 in just Gallagher in compression when we found that. So where are we going to absorb that when that comes up? Because I know Brian's looking ahead on his, which I appreciate, but that compression is huge. So there's a lot of factors in this budget that we have not considered that are going to be adding to not only the '24 budget, but the '25 budget that we haven't implemented yet. So for me, I've heard about assigned and unassigned for years, but I don't remember doing a reserve through and caught, and, and talking about the bonding we always did in order to bond, but using as percentages to make it look like we have 27 and 28% in our reserves at this time because we're using assigned or unassigned and using those languages for reserve. So unassigned I get. Assigned, I know you can use them, but some of that, when you have those assigned, have been absorbed through making a wage scale. It had to, because where'd you get the money from in each department? That's a lot of money that got absorbed.
Mr. Chair.
So
Done?
Go ahead. Oh, I should say, excuse me, yes.
Commissioner Hagcock, those assigned reserves have not been used to increase anyone's wages.
Okay.
If they decide that they need to use the assigned reserve for the project that they've been saving up on, we come in and we do a budget supplement specifically from assigned reserves for that project.
Okay. So maybe you know this because you're the, you're the auditor and our accountant. How did we absorb all the wage scale stuff that was implemented in '23 and '24, that at this time, just adding and looking at was 1.2, and it was added by one of our department heads from '23 to '24? How did we absorb the wage scale stuff that was brought to us in executive session in these budgets that were pretty substantial increases? I think it was like $175,000, $180,000 just for department heads and elected officials. How did we absorb that without using unassigned, I guess, or using assigned? I mean, people have overcollected. I mean, you don't have to answer that question because you're not going to know, but that's a lot of money just on one area of elect, or department heads, and I don't mean to pick on y'all, but how are you absorbing all this money?
Do you have a question for her?
That's my question. She's not going to be able to tell it, but I'm telling department heads this and people that have, have implemented these, this scale before it was even voted on, and then making pay bands and stuff and changing them, and still at this time, how are we absorbing this? How did we absorb it in the past with these kind of budgets and saying, "We've been taxpayer-friendly? We, we've been watching our bank for a buck." Maybe y'all prepared because you saw, and, and to be fair, maybe y'all prepared and knew you were going to move some of those people up on the scale, which some of that's very smart, before this implementation, I got it. And you already put that in your budgets, maybe? That's preparing. That's a lot of money. 1.2 plus is a lot of absorbed cash flow in '23 and '24 that we need to count for, and we need to add to a wage scale that we're implementing, which comes out right now to about 4.8 without any of the other additions I talked about. So I say on this, and we're going to talk about the wage scale, slow it down, vet it, and make sure when you come to pass and you spend 4.8, and then you have to add a compression to that, what's that total amount going to be for the taxpayers? Because that's a lot of money. And then this board has to absorb that into your budget, or you're going to absorb it into your budgets, and we are going to take the brunt of that. And that's why, if you always see me up here, we are the final decision. I am one of the final decision makers, and that's why sometimes I say the things I did all the way through in '23 and '24. How are we going to do this?
Okay. You had a question? I, I, question is where'd the money come from, if I remember right?
Well, I'm not going to ask the department heads. They have to figure that out. I'm just going to ask Cindy.
You were asking Cindy a question.
Well, it was
And then I, I lost what the question was.
Okay.
Because of the
So if they absorbed it into their budgets, is it because it was overcollected, or how do you, how would someone absorb it into their budgets at that kind of cash flow?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Cindy.
There Hagcock, I think that some of that was absorbed maybe through attrition. People at higher wages leaving, hiring in at a, you know, a lesser salary, someone brand new, might have been from unfilled FTEs that they weren't able to fill, hopefully with the new wage scale, that won't be an issue. That could be some of it. As to the specifics of how they came to the point where they felt they could absorb it, I cannot speak to that.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to move on. Again, from the list that I have, you know, the first part of the discussion is any mandated items, services, including statutory authorized items and services. Is there anything the commission wants to discuss on that? I think we got the information on all that stuff, so I didn't know if everybody's satisfied with that. The second line item is reduction in other services, statutory required or not, or other board commission priorities and changes and reductions. I think the intent of that was for the commission to kind of look at if some of the unrequired things, is there some cuts they want to look at? And, you know, for unmandated items, I have my list of stuff.
Chair.
Hold on just a second. I'm, I got, trying to go through this.
I thought you were done.
No. Need to find that. To give some examples of what we were talking about. On possible reductions would be like the senior citizens, soil conserv, soil conservation district, GIS, public advocacy, conflict, DB Health, healthcare clinic, mental health, these are unmandated, contingency fund extension 4H, courthouse and campus security, pivot point security, youth city council, maybe. And some of these have been addressed already, but I just wanted to bring it to attention, some of the non-mandated stuff. So those are those. If anybody had one that they had an interest in discussing. If anybody had one that they had an interest to discuss, name changes.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So it wasn't my discussion. It's, uh, the sheriff put it in that the youth city council would save us 15,000. Also law enforcement, let's see through WAVI, I know WAVI is paid through two different departments, so, um, I think if it's paid through one department, it's, it's good. So that's another, um, like 22,500.
I figured I'd bring those up when the sheriff comes up.
Um, you said to talk about it, I guess.
Yeah.
That's what was supposed to be added, but that's why I did it. Um, so I'm in agreement with that. So, um, on the FTEs and the things we're doing with some of that, um, I think there needs to be a more of a full discussion and, and I suppose in this point, uh, the mayor, or not the mayor, the sheriff needs to come up and explain some of this so we have a better understanding and I could, I would appreciate that.
Are those reductions? When we come up to FTEs?
Okay. And, uh, man, unmandated, do they come together?
Well, he had some, what you just brought up in, in his letter, so those discussions.
Well, he put in my unmandated basically, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I just have a quick question before we start calling him up to ask some questions to find out so I can kind of track my numbers right. Cindy, so the question's for Cindy, in your summary here, I'm going to go to page two where we're talking about, and I'm just going to go to the one right after the TIF, um, because I'm going to operate off of that as kind of where we're at. That the estimated unassigned balance for 2025 is 1677 with that million dollars estimated TIF money coming in, which means we would have to reduce the budget by 2.7. Am I reading that correctly to meet our goal of 20%? I just want to make sure I'm reading that correctly first.
That is correct.
Okay. After, Mr. Chair, if I may, does that include any of these reductions that are there or is that like as we talk through these reductions, we can take that 2.7 and we can start whatever is coming off here and then we can kind of see where we're at? I just kind of want to understand how you prepared that number.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That is the original budget.
The original one?
Yep.
Okay.
So that includes everything that was presented before. It does not reduce, it has not been reduced by any of the potential reductions.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I'm in line as we start having these conversations and looking. Thank you.
Uh, other board of commissioner priority changes are reductions. I think we need to have discussion on the fire service and probably I'll put those after the wage study implementation discussion and probably, well, I think we should put that probably after fairgrounds and probably, yeah, I had that. Is there anybody else that has any other priorities or changes or reductions?
Mr. Chair, one that might be easy that we could get off of the list, um, I did reach out to the city of Rapid City in regards to our GIS contributions. Um, this year they passed along a pretty significant increase as they want the county to be half of what the operating cost is for GIS, which a lot of our departments use for rapid map, things like that. They have agreed to allow us to step into that increase over the next two years. So they have been agreeable to reduce our contribution for next year to 240,000, um, without seeing any change in services or effect on the program. So if the board would like to make a motion to reduce the GIS contribution by 38,162 dollars, that would be a place to start with a reduction in the non-mandated area.
What was that number again, 38,000?
To reduce GIS by 38,162, which would put them at 240,000 for 2025.
Does any commissioner want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. Thank you.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter for reduce the GIS budget. 38,162.
Correct, sir.
For 2025. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, that brings us up to, we've had that discussion on the reserve calculation. Does anybody else want to further discussion on that? And this item here is from Ms. Hagcock, the healthcare trust support infusion. I'll give the floor to you.
Um, I visited with Cindy and we had a good discussion on the healthcare trust board. Sounds like in premiums, we put about 4.1 million into that through the county and some of the understanding, I need more discussion and Cindy, you're right. So, um, I'm good with what's happening on the healthcare trust board unless we have any changes at this point. To implement in the self-funded, also with the budget where we are at, at this point, I don't know where we'd get the money, even if I wanted to do that, so thank you.
And yours was the next item too, the jail bond monies, uh, add for 2025.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The jail bond dollars you brought up, how are we going to?
Bonding.
Bonding, so you're, this is your, your item also.
Thank you. So I also talked to Cindy about the bonding and, um, I talked some about the GO bonds the other day on levying, uh, for the jail and how that works and commissioners can look into that, what percentages and what makes those percentages, which we have talked about today, um, to make us be able, or for us to be able to bond, um, and just some of the other areas that Cindy clarified for me on the bonding. So anything that commissioners need on bonding or don't know at this point, I think's going to come up, uh, later anyway, but Cindy, um, also can tell you, like she did today, the percentages and how that bonding moves forward, but we have two other options if we're deciding to bond, opt out or do that levy, that imposed levy by a GO bond, so thank you.
Okay. Next item, I think was yours too, concourse items. It's 35,299 and included in the provisional budget dollars, the notes I have.
No, that's not Commissioner Hagcock's. I just included that because it's, uh, on top of non-mandated other supplies that the department's budgeted for, for their needs for concourse, for moving into that facility, so.
So this is.
All the areas that could possibly be discussed.
This wasn't included in the budget and is a request for 35,000?
It is included in the provisional, yes, sir.
It is. Okay. Is there any discussion on that? It is included in the, I'm sorry, it's, it's in the notes too. It's included in the provisional, but that's what the cost of the items would be. And I know quite a few people are moving their equipment over there, reusing it, that type of stuff, so that's actually a pretty good, uh, fund, I think. Okay, next up my item is Dakota Plains for an additional FTE. I do have 103,000 on that. That's not included in the budget. The discussion was to get some information from, uh, the judicial system and we heard back, we have a letter from that, uh, saying how it would, uh, reduce the budget. I don't know if Eric's here, do you, can you speak on that a little bit before we, so we can have some discussion?
Good morning, Commissioners, Eric Witcher, public defender. Holly had reached out to me to ask my advice on this and my question back to them was, so currently the contract with Dakota Plains Legal Services is they handle or call conflicts. That means for a common case is let's say there's two, uh, charged defendants in the same vehicle, we can only represent one of those and so the second person would go to Dakota Plains. Also, what is very common in conflict cases on the most serious felonies is we may be already representing a critical witness in a case and so even on like homicide cases, first degree rapes, one of the most, uh, serious matters, we cannot accept that case because we have a conflict. Currently under the contract with Dakota Plains, they do not accept, it's either class ones or class twos and above. So if they're facing 50 years, life in prison, et cetera, they are ill, they are not equipped to accept those cases because it's a relatively small office. With this added FTE, what they are saying is we would then be able to accept those cases. When you look at the big bills that are going to come into the county, see if we can't accept them and they can't because their contract, they just don't have enough attorneys to do them, that case would then go to private counsel. A lot of our homicide cases are covered by, by private counsel. And what happens then is you're going to get bills in the neighborhood of 25,000, 100,000. These are very serious matters and those are the biggest bills you're going to see coming in on the private attorney side. So, uh, to me, if you could, if they were able to then accept, uh, unless they had a conflict on those cases, which most of the time they're not, um, that would be a tremendous benefit to the county for $100,000. You know, you only need four or five of those kind of cases to, that you'd be able to accept and it's going to pay for itself. Uh, I think a good example of this is Sioux Falls. So Sioux Falls has a, as a public defender's office, just like we do here in Pennington County, they also have a, uh, a county run and funded conflict office. Um, it's about seven or eight attorneys, I believe, they have a little bit higher, um, uh, caseload than we do here in Pennington County, but they end up handling the majority of the most serious cases because of the things that we just talked about. So we get assigned, you know, close to 6,000 cases annually, so of those, it's the odds of us having a, just by sheer numbers, of having a conflict is much greater than a smaller office that may have substantially less cases. I think they're normally take four or 500 cases, so about 10% of what we do. So just by odds, they're going to have a much lower likelihood of having conflict. So to me, I would highly recommend that you, that you look at having, increasing that contract so they could accept those more serious cases.
From my, from what, uh, during the budget presentation, from what they discussed, I'll just be straightforward, Eric, you know, they said they've got the, you know, the years of experience, so they can handle cases a lot faster, more efficient, because they know, that was one of the comments that we heard and, uh, that's how we got, the discussion got brought up, if I'm correct.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
All right. Uh, Mr. Witcher, just out of curiosity, because of your letter here about withdrawing, what is the savings with the withdrawal that you, withdrawal that you put in here so that I have an understanding of what that total savings is for, for those FTEs?
Sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question, sorry.
Attorney, not public defender.
He's withdrawing.
Two different conversations, sir.
Okay, maybe I just see from Eric Witcher, in order to facilitate budgeting our employees moving to the new wage scale, I'm withdrawing my request for additional FTEs in 2025.
It's attorney?
Nope, that's mine, that's from me.
Or maybe explain to the board your employees and your numbers versus giving Dakota Plains an additional FTE.
Okay, so, yeah, so our, our office is staffed with 20 attorneys. Part of my original budget request for 2025 was to include additional FTEs, three attorneys and a legal secretary. So, you know, I, I understand the, the difficult decisions this board has to make this year with looking at a new wage scale, looking at additional FTEs, et cetera. As part of this discussion with the other department heads and is withdrawing those FTEs so that we can move to this new scale, because part of that new scale is us increasing our new attorneys by approximately $10,000. Recruiting and retention is going to be our biggest issue this, this next year or two. And so I'm willing to, to do that, make that, you know, make that request of try to get our current employees and future employees a little extra money in, instead of asking for those additional FTEs. I'm, I'm, I'm worried about not being able to meet all of our requirements, uh, in 2025. However, if, if I'm unable to fill our FTEs because of our wages are too low, I'm in the same pickle anyway. So that these are, this is the reason I was willing to, uh, withdraw my request for additional Dakota Plains is an entirely different entity, it's a 501(c)(3), and so they are saying they will adjust their contract to include accepting these most serious cases. They do have a lot of experience within their office. The difficulty is these most difficult cases require hundreds of hours that go into them. So you can't really take those and, uh, take, you know, all the other cases that they're taking. So that's, that's the reason that they're willing to modify their contract, but through that extra FTE.
Am I? I fully understand that. I just was asking a very basic, I need, I want to have it in my head on my paper, what the, the impact of the budget is with you withdrawing, you know, based on your request of that, so that way I have some numbers to factor when we're talking further along.
I'm sorry, so it's about $400,000. By me withdrawing those FTEs, that was about $400,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry. And I, I, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Was it Paul that did the presentation?
I wasn't here for it, but probably.
I think it was.
Paul Brinkin. You know, I asked if he could get a letter from the judge, you know, with the judge's support, which, uh, a few days later I did receive that letter. So I think the idea is if we spend a dollar, can we save two? I mean, that's going to take, uh, studies in your office, we're going to be, going to be much more expensive to expedite, expedite those cases compared to Dakota Plains. It seems to, my understanding was, you know, they can, they can do it a lot quicker and a lot cheaper. So I think he was asking for one more employee to, if they were going to carry this word. Yep. If, if you look at like cost per case, like a big office like mine, we can do these cases on average about $600 a case. That is just a lot. Dakota Plains is going to be able to do it for eight, 900 a case. Go to private counsel, it's about $2,000. So it's just about building efficiencies within offices that handle this stuff all the time because you're in a courtroom where you have five cases instead of one. That's the concept. You, you just develop efficiencies that way.
Chair.
Erica.
I appreciate you withdrawing and I thought it was just state attorney, I apologize, Commissioner Laster, when I was reading them. But I also think for efficiency, um, in this budget, um, you're, you're taking away FTEs and then in this case we'd be adding one, even if I believe Paul does a great job and his, and his office does, um, I believe we need to take care of the people we have here first and, and these budgets and what we have to spend money on before we add, um, another 100,000, uh, for another FTE. So, um, I believe everything you're saying is correct, but, um, I'm going to take care of the people here at Pennington County first and then if that budget allows, um, 100,000 or it could be absorbed in somebody else's budget, um, because they have and believe that maybe, you know, this FTE is more important than some, some other issue in their department, then I would agree with it, but, um, at this time, I think we need to take care of the, the areas that, uh, and you, and you have shown that, that we need to pay for first. So thank you, Eric.
Any further questions or discussion? I'd look for a motion on the additional FTE for Dakota Plains.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, motions made by Roskinet, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Well, I'm not in favor, I mean, I'm in favor of probably this particular one, however, I do think we need to see where we're going to be at before we add something else to it when we're already asking people to cut. But my, my no vote's going to be purely because I think we should look at that after we figure out where we're at with our standard budget before we come back and start saying, well, maybe this can fit, maybe we can plug this in. So I, my no's going to be purely on that, not that I disagree that maybe this would be beneficial for, um, moving cases right along or the experience. I just, I think I, I have to vote no purely until we get our regular budget figured out. I don't want to add something to it where we're already saying, let's cut stuff.
Yeah. I, I just want to, right, this is, it's still provisional, so Cindy can make the changes and we have two more hearings to where we can change, change that, but this, just so we can get the actual numbers.
And, Mr. Chair, can we clarify that the? And, Mr. Chair, can we clarify that the proper motion would be to add a hundred and three thousand dollars to the public advocate contract for an additional FTE?
Mr. Roskinet.
Uh, yes, that would be my motion.
And the second is okay?
Agreed.
Second is okay with that. Any further discussion? All in favor and indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries with three ayes and two noes. Next I have on my agenda fairground projects then, so I'd probably request Ron. I, Ron, what I think this has to do with is John come forward with a lot of, uh, well, he just brought forward the expenditures for the HVAC system for the Kerstaf Center, but I think there were some other issues that the commission may want updated on.
Sure. Uh, Ron Jeffries, Central State's Fair General Manager. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission for giving me a few minutes to speak with you. Uh, I don't envy your position of having to go through and make budget cuts, but I will, as I've said every time I've been before this dais, when it's at budget time, your most valuable assets are the men and women that work for you here and the people under their charge. That's what makes your county run. And when you have to make priorities, I feel that is something that should be considered, even over fairgrounds. Now, that's not with authorization from my board of directors, I won't mention that. But these are the people that make the county run. They also do a number of things that help the fairgrounds run as well. So I wanted to start with that. Um, I had two things. One of them was the, um, the capital projects that John brought forward, uh, for a two million dollar request was to provide new insulation and HVAC into the event center. So there's two projects within that and the event center's twenty years old. Our current HVAC system, uh, is in dire need of repair. I think we had two of our units not working properly out of six and now I think there's four out of six not working properly for heating the facility. Um, insulation is just a matter of retaining and reducing costs for operation and repairing some of the penetrations that have happened in the batt insulation that allows moisture to, condensation to go up into the roof, condensate on the metal and then drip back through the batt insulation. And that causes tears and disruption within that insulation system. When we originally built that building, the whole building was only four and a half million dollars. Um, we made a number of efforts to control costs, it was going up. Uh, I wish maybe we would have spent them back then with the spray-on insulation over the batt insulation system that we did, um, select. But those are the two items we brought. We do not have and did not obviously let bids for that. We got estimates from two different providers for HVAC and insulation. Those bids came in at just over one point five million. But not being within the bid process, our concern was going to bid and getting a, have an approval for one point five or one point, uh, six five, if you had added a ten percent on, and then having a bid come in at one point eight and being hamstrung. Um, if there's allowances within the process that when it goes to bid, we look at what the actual cost would be, I think we could reduce the request by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that, knowing that from the estimates, if the estimates come in, if the bids come in at the estimate price, that's where we would most likely land. Now, I can tell you a couple of things, uh, in addition to that. One of the things that we, the fairgrounds in itself does bring to the table is we do provide certain amounts of access to, uh, community sponsor dollars that allow us to make improvements that, you know, the, the county departments just don't have access to. And from that, I mean organizations like General Equipment, CECO, LEI, uh, the Black Hills Exteriors that do a tremendous amount of, of dollar improvement on the fairgrounds in terms of sponsorship dollars. In the past, we've not really done a really great job of tracking and presenting those to you, but we now have that on our list to provide with you or for you. Um, second, uh, we had an Oxford Economics, um, Economic Impact Study done that was just completed after the stock show. And that study, unlike old studies, when we used to do it, my opinion was, was a swag, just a, a guess as to what, how many people attended the fair, how many people participated, how much money they spent. Oxford Economics came in with bullet points of over five thousand dollar data-driven. So now they track everything, as you know, by cell phone and, and, uh, they even go out into major retailers and hotel chains and restaurants to see what those, what those economic impacts are based on visitors from fairgrounds to those, to those locations. Within that study, and I know only a few of you have probably seen it, I'll make an effort to get that to you in its entirety. But they projected a one point three million dollar property tax revenue generation from operations at the fairgrounds. So I also feel that we do help the county's bottom line within the, the economic impact that's created at that, uh, organization. One other note that's not on the capital, but on our request, um, last year we received twenty-four, uh, five thousand four hundred and, five hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And we cre- requested a three percent increase, uh, in line with the numbers we got from auditor Cindy. And that was a total of sixteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine. We are not opposed to tightening our belts and living within where we are in 2024. Again, I truly believe your best asset's sitting behind us here. And if that helps to bring that, we'll work harder at sponsorships and we'll put in a few extra hours. We'll get a few more volunteer groups out to help us with projects. Uh, we had the FFA crew out yesterday and they painted fences for us on day, so, uh, you never know where it's going to come from, but, um, we're here before you to participate in helping make the, the budget balance in any way necessary.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Ron, can you explain that? Um, I don't remember exactly what you said, but you said an impact to property taxes. Can you say the number again slowly, because I didn't quite hear the number? And then kind of explain that, how that's helping?
So Oxford Economics did this study that, again, uses a, a number of data-driven points where old economics impact studies, they would come in and ask, how many people attend your fair? How many people are from out of town? How far do they travel, et cetera? Well, now, the new economic impact studies does it all through cellular data. And then with data points at various other locations, it's all based on geofencing. So they really get a real number as to what happens. They translate those dollars into money spent on grounds, money spent by the fair, money spent by our attendees and visitors and providers. And they calculate that back out through a, can't tell you the exact process, but they calculate that back out into what that does for economic impact and what that translates into property tax expenditures taking place in Pennington County due to economic activity from the fairgrounds. And that number from Oxford Economics was one point three million dollars in property tax generated by activities driven from the fairgrounds.
Mr. Chair, follow-up. Cindy, I saw the look on your face, that's the reason why I asked the question, but I also wasn't following it. Why did you have that look on your face? Because it seems like you aren't following it and only because I want to understand.
If I may, Mr. Chair, it sounds more like you're talking about sales tax, not property tax.
I've, I've got them both and I'll provide a copy to you here.
Okay.
And then, then that was my fault for not bringing it back as soon as we had that report done. I should have brought that and presented to the entire commission. I instead presented to my board of directors and those persons that served on our board and, uh, I shared with some of the incoming commissioners as well, so.
I, I do believe I had copies made for, when you presented that and put in the boxes, I think. It's been quite a while. But I don't remember that, that part in the, the report.
Mr. Chair, so here's the end, because of all that spending, it impacts us, the property tax by one point three million dollars and the good? I mean, it's just.
Right, and, and so then, any monies that you invest in the fairgrounds, if you were doing clean slate, it would be a one point three million dollars to fairgrounds generated in and out. That's not what, not what I'm asking. Our request, the, the, uh, this year's request, I'm offering to reduce that by sixteen thousand three, uh, sixteen thousand, three thirty-nine, which would bring, bring our subsidy, I'll call it, back to what it was in twenty-four, which was the five forty-four.
Six forty-eight.
Six forty-eight, I should wear my glasses.
Okay, so you're only talking about the levy piece of it now, is that right?
Correct. Now, on the, on the, uh, capital improvements project, that is just a piece of, uh, two improvements that need to be made to the James Kerstet Event Center at some point. The HVAC is critical, insulation not as critical as HVAC, but still very important and they, those two projects go pretty well hand in hand, in my opinion.
Could you have any more follow-up, Travis?
No.
So from what I hear, Ron, you're, you're suggesting that you stick with the previous year's budget would be reducing it down to sixteen thou- or reducing sixteen thousand, three thirty-nine, bringing back to five forty-four, six forty-eight, uh, for this year's.
Did he say sixteen or sixty, sir?
Sixteen.
Okay, I thought he said sixty.
Chair, I'd make that as a motion.
Moved by Drews to, seconded by Roskinet. And that is to go back to the 2024 budget, find, approve the five forty-four, six forty-eight, which is a sixteen thousand, three thirty-nine reduction from 2025's budget.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Ron, appreciate your offer to, to take it back. Certainly doesn't resolve the overall issue for our budget, but it all helps, so thank you.
And, and I, I must say, I, when John was here presenting, I did bring up about, uh, the facilities fee.
Yes.
Again, and the discussions and I just, you know, being part of maintenance and repairs and remodels, you know, I know the life expectancy of, of these HVAC systems and even the buildings is tough. I think you guys do an excellent job of upkeep and maintaining and getting sponsorship help to, to fix things. I think, no doubt, no doubt about that. But for these big purchases like this one, we, I think we do have to have some type of capital improvement fund set aside, some type of charge to be able to keep our facilities up. I mean, uh, these HVAC systems ain't cheap.
No, they're not, sir.
And I, as you guys said, you know, maintaining them, yes, you can, you're going to be able to get, get by. You know, replace a fan, replace a compressor, uh, and up until the parts become obsolete and then you, and they run out. But, uh, you know, a one point five million, uh, hit, especially in a year like this, I, I, I don't see it, see it happening, so we're going to have to create something. And I think that's something that the Fair Board really needs to take a good, hard look at because, uh, we want to, the facility's doing a great job looking good and there's, you guys are doing a lot of stuff in order to bring in some revenue and bring in the people. We've, we've got to make some adjustments to our buildings to accommodate that. And I think, uh, quite frankly, with the char- the fees that, uh, the Fair Board charges for rental and so forth are very, very reasonable and I, I don't think people would have a heartache knowing that they're, they're going to support their, uh, community fairgrounds with a small.
Right, and I follow your, your reason, if I may. And I follow your reasoning on a facility, if you're very similar to what they do at the monument. Uh, they provide a facility fee on every ticket issued. Um, a num- you know, we do two ticketed events, we do stock show and fair. Um, I didn't calculate total number of tickets sold to provide that to you today. I can, before you have your final, I can get you those numbers and show you what that impact. But even if you put a two dollar and fifty cent fee on ten thousand tickets, it doesn't begin to approach large building repair. It would do maintenance, I mean, we just bought five different floor scrubbers to be able to maintain all the buildings, uh, the manner they need to be maintained. Um, we might be able to handle something like that. But these, these large building, um, repairs are beyond our capability at any level.
Yeah, well, and this is what I told John. If it was implemented eight years ago and it was put into savings, there would be a good fund where the ask would probably be about half, maybe. I don't know. It, it, that's up to the, you and the Fair Board to come up with, which, how, not just one event center, but you, you know, your facility wide or something like that. But, uh, it's just like I do, I put money away in the savings for that stuff and it doesn't always cover the cost, but then it doesn't hurt as much at the, when it does happen.
Yes, sir.
So I do have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, I'll stand by for any other questions.
Next on our list that we created is the new FTE requests. And from the list, from the book that we have, uh, that's in our budget books, I'm going to call, call them up by the beginning of the list. So first on the list is the, on the public defender's office, I think you explained that, but, uh, Eric, could you please?
Here, I think we got memos to each of them that.
Yeah.
I think you should announce which ones, um, withdrawals, withdrawn those FTEs and it'd make it a lot easier than having each one come up, because they were drawing them.
Well, I think they need to come up and explain, because we have people that are public that haven't really seen this yet, so they can explain it on the video.
Mr. Chair, for point of clarification though, these dollars that we're about to talk about, none of those were included in the provisional budget, right? So this is not even going to impact the current provisional budget.
Well, we have two options for provisional, one with FTEs and one without.
Yes, option one does not include the new FTEs.
Okay.
But option two does.
So I, I think I'd just like to have each department give an explanation where, where they're at with this.
Uh, good morning again, uh, Mr. Chair and Commission, Eric Witcher, public defender. Um, as I had originally requested the three additional attorneys as well as a, as a legal secretary for the 2025 budget. As I had said earlier, um, in discussion with our department chairs, seeing where we were looking at for funds available for the county commission for this next year, um, I, I was agreed to withdraw those, uh, new FTE requests. Um, you know, the, I have concerns, of course, because, you know, we're going to get assigned cases and, and in 2025, I'm anticipating an increase in case numbers for next year as, as well as potentially the severity of those cases. However, you know, with our, uh, new hires that we have, we are expecting here in, in August, we will be fully staffed again. However, what we found in the legal marketplace is us being able to, uh, attract applicants when it's, when they're not law students and we go and recruit them in the fall and, and here in the spring again, as they're looking for their first job, i- it's almost impossible to find qualified applicants through the rest of the year. We expect we're going to lose two or three people every year because of the size of our office that we have. And I think it's the most critical thing that we can do in this, in the 2025 budget is to, to get our starting salary for new attorneys in a, in, to be competitive, uh, with our competitors. And that is principally, um, the mini ha-ha, public defender's office and state's attorney's office. So that, to me, that is the number one thing that our office needs. Um, because if we can, even if we had three other, three extra FTEs, if we can't fill them, it doesn't do us any good, right? So that, that's the reason for my request and I'll stand for questioning.
Is there any questions for Eric?
Mr. Chair, and I just want to confirm, I'm still thinking the same number, that's four hundred thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Next I do have, next on the item is, uh, State's Attorney's Office and I do have Laura's memo, if she would like to make her comments.
Good morning, Commissioners Laura Retsel, Pennington County State's Attorney. This is clearly a concession, it's nothing that I want to do. It's an effort to establish to the commission my willingness to recognize your difficulty in making decisions during this budget process and an acceptance that we have to make hard decisions and choices and an acknowledgement that the State's Attorney's Office would benefits, benefit significantly from the wage scale implementation, especially in the attorney pay range. Our attorneys at the starting range that they are at right now, it's not something that attorneys are willing. that attorneys are willing to be paid, and the Minnehaha State's Attorney's Office, their, their starting range is so much ahead of ours that we're losing all the good talent out of the, at the University of South Dakota to the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office. And even when we can get them to start with us, we lost one of our new hires within three months to the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office when they had a position open for him. So as much as I desperately need those attorney positions and desperately need that victim advocate, um, I'm going to try to provide quality service with less, um, despite my desperate need as a concession in the hope that you will, um, grant the, the wage scale. And I know that it in no way is apples to apples comparison, um, but it's a indication of goodwill and a hope that you will give, do consideration to the wage scale, um, and I will stand for questions as well.
Any questions for Laura?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laszlo.
What does that impact to the bu- what, what does that reduction on, on the numbers that we have?
So the two attorneys and the one victim advocate, I had calculated at approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with hope that I would, uh, receive federal dollars for the victim advocate position, um, it would be closer to three hundred thousand dollars if I didn't.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Laura? Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Next I have, and I do have the memo from, uh, Buildings and Grounds, David, Davis Purcell. Oh, David's not here.
Morning Commissioners. Dave Ecclestone, Assistant Director, Davis is on vacation. Um, I think we requested five FTEs, um, if, we're, we're, we do have same thing everybody else has, have difficult time filling those positions, um, if we can maintain the people we have and not get them to leave, um, we'll have to push forward and do the best we can to keep everything.
Thanks, Dave, is there any questions for Dave?
Here.
Ms. Haggar.
So, I appreciate you, Dave, and you've been with us a long time. So in this case, we've increased building space by two buildings, um, budgets, um, on that Buildings and Grounds, so we've lacked for FTEs to increase over the years, cause I've been here a long time, um, we've lacked to increase it, which we're gonna do, it sounds like two hundred thousand, we have three hundred ninety-eight million dollars worth of buildings, it's not really a question for Dave, cause they're gonna defend and, and do what they need to do with their budget, I understand, and we put them in a pickle, and now we're saying, um, wait another year. And I've been here nine years, and they have waited many years to do what they need to do in Buildings and Grounds, and this is one area that I believe, um, needs those FTEs. Their utilities increased, their productivity of what they have to do for these buildings increased, and we're saying, thank you for giving back those FTEs, and that has been either every year I've been here or otherwise, you've taken money from Buildings and Grounds or other departments needed their money for other stuff besides to use for what was originally used in that eight hundred thousand for Building and Grounds to fix other stuff. I know this, cause you saw a five-year plan, you saw that because Mr. Davis brought up a five-year plan of how far we are behind. Now we're saying, and they're being nice and saying again, because they wanna implement a wage scale, and be nice like everybody else is being, but we've, we've made their budget and made them make do with something with two increased buildings, and we're saying, make do again, Dave, make do again, uh, Mr. Purcell. Um, I truly believe in this budget that a lot of the stuff we're doing is not, it's, it's not right, and this is one department I think that we have not, uh, taken in consideration, and this budget is not final, I understand that, but you can't keep adding stuff to a budget, you can't keep adding buildings to a, um, department and say, make do. So, um, I'm in disagreement with this, I don't know how many, because, um, I, when Dave Purcell came up here, the Buildings and Grounds Director, he said that, um, we probably wouldn't need him till July or something like that, I understand, and I get that, but what's happening now? Those buildings are already online, those buildings are getting done right now, because you don't, you still have to clean them, you still have to pay utilities, they might not be as high because you don't have as many, um, employees in there, meaning department heads in there, but those buildings are still having those costs in twenty-four, and they started having them in twenty-three and you've sucked them up through your budgets. Um, I think he needs to come back, Dave Purcell does, and give us some other numbers before this is final, and be fair to this department of what we need to do to move forward, cause we have time.
I got a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Um, but that's why I said that I'm fighting for this department because they deserve it. Out of all the departments that have worked their butt off, and not that y'all don't, cause I love y'all and you're, this, Pennington County, you do a great job, but we've increased this as Commissioners, you've had the ask for the buildings, and now we're putting it on this department, so, um, that was, um, my final say, go ahead.
Well, my, my thought on this is, number one, thank you Buildings and Grounds for doing what you do, and following pace with everybody else for what you feel is more important and so forth, but quite frankly, would, when I look at this, you know, the buildings aren't gon- as Davis said, aren't gonna come online till later on, we are planning, I look at this as, you know, if it's not used, they are not hired, it'll come back to us, and, but we gotta be prepared. When you get into maintenance technician twos, those two and a custodial lead, those are some positions that, uh, have, uh, special training that needed to be done, and it's gonna take a while to hire those and get those going and so forth, so in order to start, from my numbers, I'm, I, I was looking at the custodial team lead you're gonna need, and that's at, uh, a thirty-five, two oh nine, a maintenance technician two, uh, he's got thirty-five, two oh nine on that, I don't quite understand if that's just moving somebody up or how that's working.
Probably saying no.
Yeah, but then the second one is a, a maintenance technician two, was a seventy thousand two, two, the total like a month was one forty, four forty for those three.
Chair, I, may I finish too? So, uh, you're trying to make a, a solution, and I really appreciate that, but I think Dave Purcell should come back and say, okay, um-
I understand that, but I was just in the middle of my, my, what I was trying to-
Go ahead. Go ahead. I know you're, you're trying to be nice.
I, I wasn't making a motion, but that was-
Okay, thank you, Lord.
But that's what I was looking at, and I explained, you know, and I looked through the budget this morning and, and, uh, to get these, some of these people up to where they need to be, when you look at the comparisons, with the technician two and, and HVAC techni- are professionals, the plumbing professionals, there's, there's quite a bit change in there, so I think the wage study will help that, but if, I, I'm in agreeance with, with Deb to bring back Davis on this, we got till next month, but those would be three that I'd be interested in, in knowing, uh, if he's willing, it, we could add those if he needs it or he can wait and so forth, you know, I, I don't know what you got in staff that could move up and then you hired lower or something along those lines.
So Chair, can I make a motion to, um, Dave, bring Dave Purcell back on this and not make a decision today on this final budget for removing any of them, that'd be my motion.
So, that would probably be, I-
Uh, you need a second first.
I wanna clarify your, your budget, or your, your motion, to bring back, he, he can still come back at our next meeting and, and have that discussion, but right now the request is, is not to add any.
Not to, well, mine would be to leave his budget to have a, um, amendment to it, and say that, leave him in there for now, and then have him, have a discussion, and then at that point you'd take him off, or he'd say, okay, he'd give us a full discussion on it, and he would say, okay, I only need two for sure.
Okay, I need a motion.
That was my, not to take anything off until we have a full discussion with Dave, yeah.
Your motion is to leave all five, um, in the budget.
Yes.
Or put them in the budget.
They're in option two.
Oh, yeah, they're in, if you take option two, they're all in, but if you do, you might wanna save that motion to, help me out here, Cindy, I know you're waiting.
I can add those five to option one, if you would like me to.
Okay.
Okay. Just, and if it's cut down, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to have him have the discussion, like I said, I think it's important.
I need a second.
Okay, I'll shut up then.
So your motion is to add the five, uh, FTEs to option one budget?
Can I have a little more discussion?
I need a second first.
Well, I might not want five, so, or not my case, me, um, want five, what I'm saying this is-
Wait for a second, uh, you wanna clarify your motion?
And you might be right with three, I don't know what the motion should be because I don't have the discussion of the department head to figure out, and neither does anybody else, so how do you make a motion without having this full discussion? So what should the motion be, Chair?
We, quite frankly, his rec- we should probably follow his request and then request him back at the next meeting.
I agree, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
So his request was to withdraw the five, but then he can come back, and then we can have the discussion, three, two, one, whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Laster.
Cindy, what is the specific impact that this one has, the total numbers?
Hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred.
Thank you.
That's for all five.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So the consensus I'm feeling is to accept the letter, and we'll have a discussion with Davis at the first meeting in, in, uh, August.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions for Dave?
Yeah, no, not for Dave.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Mr. Chair, I think to remain consistent, though, uh, we should accept this, and so as not to confuse the numbers and remove, uh, or not add that amount in, and so that we know that as we're doing the numbers, that we do have the hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred less than what was originally requested.
You got a good point, then I'd have to do that with the PDO and State's Attorneys.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think we can do that towards the end.
Later, yep, I agree.
I would make that as a motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Drews made a motion to accept David Purcell's letter of withdrawing the five FTEs, and I think this is just for the sake of the budget.
Second that motion.
And there's a second, and we'll have to go back and do State's Attorneys and PDO too. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I think before we move forward, we should probably do the same for PDO to accept that, uh, their withdrawals for the additional, um, FTEs.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Made by Haggar, seconded by Laster, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next is to accept, uh, the request of Laura Ratchell, State's Attorney, to withdraw her request for her FTEs.
So moved.
Moved by Haggar, seconded by Drews, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we took care of those. We do have one more FTE request, and that is apprentice highway worker, and I'll recognize Joe Miller, and this is not in the general fund dollars.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent, uh, yes, you are correct, this is not a general fund to ask, this is strictly to the restricted Highway Two O One Fund. Um, we continually see a need in our outer divisions for a, a, a fifth person, um, New Underwood and, and Hill City currently have four, um, we do have an approved FTE for Hill City that we've chosen not to hire yet because the, the road of South Rochford Road has not been completed, um, we'll look to start hiring that once probably March of next year, um, to hire that in, to get them on board, personal removal the following year, um, and New Underwood is the only one left that does not have five individuals in that division, Wall has five, uh, Rapid City has many, um, and then Hill City will have five. What, uh, the problem that this causes is that both divisions don't have the proper people to do proper traffic control, if they're doing like, say, a, a covert repair or ditch work or something like that, um, they don't have enough people to put a flagger on either end and then still have people to complete the project. So we continually pull people from the Rapid City Division, which then hinders the projects that we've got going on in the Rapid City Division, so that's the, the reason behind the request, and New Underwood does have two hundred and about, I think, two hundred and forty miles of gravel to maintain, so, um, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Is this an eighty thousand dollar impact, is that what?
Eighty thousand, forty-three dollars, correct. And I may add, uh, prior to two thousand eighteen, the Highway Department was at fifty FTEs for about ten or fifteen years, I believe, they had not added any FTEs for a many number of years.
And specifically, this one's for, did you say Wall?
New Underwood.
New Underwood, sorry.
Here.
Ms. Haggar.
Um, you're, I'll probably say no because of the other FTEs people withdrew, um, it doesn't come out of general fund, but still taxpayer dollars, it doesn't have to say general fund on it, um, at this time, um, do I think, um, at this time in New Underwood or, or the impact on the roads is pretty, um, impactful? Yes, but everybody else is doing the same thing when, when, uh, they're saying that these impacts for them is gonna, to make it a little bit rough on them, and they, but they can make do, so I'll have you, uh, and, and I think in this case have to do the same thing as the rest of your departments, thank you.
Is there any further questions for Joe? Joe, this is, doesn't affect the general fund budget.
That is correct.
So it's coming right out of your highway funds?
Correct.
Is there any questions for Joe? Any motions?
I'm gonna move to deny.
Move to deny the request for apprentice highway worker from Ms. Haggar?
Second.
It is seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'm going to, um, support what Joe has, uh, recommended, and, uh, so I'll be voting against the, uh, motion on the floor.
Any further discussion? All in favor of not funding that apprentice highway worker, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So motion fails on a three to two bump, is there another motion?
Mr. Chair, my motion would be to approve one additional FTE be taken, be supported out of the highway funds.
Second.
Second motion is to approve the FTE supported by, um, highway funds, any further discussion?
Chair.
Ms. Haggar.
Taking eighty thousand dollars when we just told other people that they couldn't have FTEs, whether you, the whole, whether it's general fund or it's, um, highway fund or it's mandated funds, guys, those are the same people paying the same bill, okay? They're all the same people, so you can't tell one not to do it, and because someone can fit it in their budget, it's the same cash flow, because one in general fund doesn't have maybe as much money in it, but you can't, for me, if I'm a leader, I'm not gonna tell everybody else to do something and not do it myself, and that, that's why I, I can't vote for this today.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
The department head comes to, uh, suggest that, uh, we not include, uh, a previous request, uh, I'm inclined to believe the, uh, department head, and, uh, so I appreciate Joe coming forward and suggesting this today.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm sorry, I said no, I mean, I said aye, but I mean no, no.
Two noes, three ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I'm just gonna-
I'm just gonna make a statement if you don't mind, um, in us trying to cut, what I've calculated currently, we've added a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Just for important reference.
Next we have the wage study implementation. I think everybody's heard, uh, the staff has worked hard on this. This is something that we are gonna bring up. The budget is presented to us with the implementation. Uh, it does have a two point two million dollar impact. And it's, like I said, including that provisional budget, so I, I think that what I do is, uh, like to hear from, we'll just start with Deb and work our way down on what their feelings on or discussion, or if they have questions or what they need to do, and then after everybody's had a chance to speak, uh, request a motion.
So, we're not going through, it looks like the sheriff wants to cut some FTEs.
Oh, shoot.
That's what I was gonna make a point of clarification on. I was like, wait a minute.
I think, um, we haven't talked about his cuts.
Thank, thank you guys for keeping me in line, but at least you know what we're gonna talk about after.
You thought you were gonna get Scott off, didn't you?
Mr. Mueller, Sheriff.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, and I was gonna try to figure out a way to sneak myself in here, because I think this is a discussion that needs to be had, so. And I appreciate you letting me come up prior to talking through the wage study, and then, um, I just want to clarify just a couple of things, uh, that I've heard, specifically related to, this memo that I, that I submitted is related to addressing compression steps in the public safety band. When we brought the, the wage scale, uh, to the commission at budget hearing last week, we've already implemented compression steps throughout the rest of the county. We just excluded the public safety band because of the cost initially. We, we knew that we were asking a pretty heavy lift with the implementation of the wage study. I knew that the public safety band compressions were gonna be, um, would add to that, and frankly, it took us a little bit longer to get the exact budget amount. And I was working with our staff on a plan to bring, uh, a plan back early next year to try to fix the compression for the public safety bands, because I think it's important. And as we talked through that, uh, I believe our, my command staff and myself personally believe it's worth making some cuts to our budget to be able to implement the compression and the full wage scale. And the reason that, that I say that is when we look through, and Commissioner Hancock mentioned it earlier, when you look through the, the individual people, where they, where they go on the scale, what their percentages are, what, what implementing the, the compression steps for three quarters of the county, but not including the public safety band does, uh, for our positions is a new deputy that would be hired in this next year would be making the same amount of money as a three-year deputy. And then if we go fix that compression for that three-year deputy, they're gonna be making more money than what a five and six-year deputy makes. So allowing us to fix these compression steps upfront, um, will, will be a really big deal for us across the position. Specifically, it's, it's all the positions that are listed in the information that you have in the public safety band, so law enforcement corrections, our detox techs, control room operators, and I'm probably missing a classification or two, but that's a gist of it. And what I'm bringing to you today is, that's gonna be an increase of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and in my memo, um, I tried to bring some solutions forward on things that we could cut that are non-mandated. Uh, but I wanted to talk briefly through what each one of those were in a public setting, so everybody had an understanding of what we were doing with that.
Chair, can I ask him some question, ask the sheriff some questions on his compression?
Yeah.
So you said throughout the county, this was the only one left that you thought in three, other than the three quarters of the other county that would have compression, and it would be two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Correct. The, the other, the rest of the county on the other four bands, um, that the direction was given to department heads and elected officials to look at those, look at your people once they were placed on the scale and fix the compression issues, and I believe that's been done through the rest of the county.
Okay. Um, I went through some of it, and, um, I had that packet to go through, and I only got about halfway through.
It's a lot of stuff.
I have a lot of questions on that, and that's why I said, um, we just got this packet, and not that you guys did any wrong, and I'll keep saying on the compression or anything else, but I'm not seeing the same thing you're seeing of the three fourths not having some compression in there. We tried to fix it, remember last year, I think it was twenty-three, was it? Yeah, it was twenty-three or twenty-two, and we spent another twenty-three hundred dollars, or two million three hundred dollars. And then when we still fixed it, we can't, it kept coming in, and we still had areas, I don't know, maybe like fifty times, that we had to go in the back and still do compression and other issues. Why I'm saying that is because on the Gallagher study, we said that we didn't really like it, and, and I got that. But then when I was looking through it on the comparables and stuff, some of the comparables that were used, and maybe that's why we maybe shouldn't have used them, because of the compression it caused in our, remember from Gallagher, in our studies. But then we went when we used comparable counties and stuff and use the same comparables that the Gallagher did. And I'm just thinking in my head, when you're talking about the compression, not only for your department, but others, that are we gonna end up in that same state? So, um, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I would hope that the other departments, um, would bring this forward before we finalize this budget about the, what those compressions can, are, are going to be. Cause two hundred and eighty-five thousand, that's just one area of public safety and bands that, um, we're moving forward with. Um, and again, um, when I talked about it earlier and bringing it forward, my worry is by looking at these as a compression and the things that we haven't noticed, um, from wage scale. So, thank you for bringing yours forward, and, um, I know you've been a part of that, and I'll keep saying, Brian, guys did a heck of a lot of work, and I respect that. It's just that, um, some of this stuff, um, I didn't see all of it, and I, and I see current positions and other positions from what you're doing, and, and I did see it in your department, so. And then I saw this memo and said, okay, I understand that, but it's not just your department that I saw it in, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Was there a question? I thought you had a question.
Well, on the, the, uh, on the compression, basically my point was, he did what he was supposed to do, but my question is, I believe, not to him, not to our sheriff, but to the others, I think you need to go back through your bands and your current and your other positions, and start looking at what Sheriff Mueller just found, um, public safety and other areas where that compression is. Because coming back, like the other ones with Gallagher, it was two point three million dollars, so that's a huge hit, um, if, if these bands aren't right.
And we had already.
Mr. Mueller, you have the floor, please.
Thank you. For clarification, we had already done that with all of our support bands. I think the cost was, you know, approximately two hundred thousand, that's all included in the, the numbers that you have. And I don't know exactly what the other department heads did, but I know the direction was given out by Carol for the department heads to look at each, look at all their individuals on the pay scale and fix the compression issues, and I believe the majority of the departments have already gone through that process too.
I think most of them did, but I did sound, found some discrepancies in some of these for compression, so.
Sure.
Again, I, I saw some in yours, which I see you, you move forward on, um, but I've seen them in other departments, and I can bring those out later, but I'm not done with that packet. That's why I said I don't know what that number is. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so you got your request, and from my understanding, this could, auditor's office gonna need a little bit, could you go through your request a little bit?
Yep, and, and just so you know, offline, I sent, uh, Cindy a, a detailed email as to what specific changes to what line items that would offset this, and I'll go through that really quick with you. So the total cost is about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and my recommendation would be to remove two complex security staff from Pivot Point. And just to give you a little bit of background on that, when we started Pivot Point, the, the specific positions that we employ at Pivot Point, and they pay us revenue for a majority of it, but not all of it, is one maintenance staff and then two security staff. Uh, they've approached us over the last two months and wanted to increase that security staff to four. But the security staff that they need is a different level of security than what we provide with our complex security. They're not allowed to be armed in their facility. I think that they could do it for less of a cost. It was easier for them initially because we had a model with the, with the classification and the hiring process to be able to do that, but with the fact that they want to increase to, that to four, um, and I'll talk through the rest of my memo to amend it, if we're gonna reduce armed security on our campus, I have a hard time, um, having them have four armed staff working in that small facility over there. So we reached out to them yesterday. We're gonna work with them closely to try to transition their security to a Pivot Point, uh, West River Mental Health staff, uh, supervised and hired by them, and there'll be, that'll allow us to reduce some, some costs in hiring, training, and supplies, uh, that we currently don't get reimbursed for from Pivot Point, so. Uh, that, that's one of the, one of the processes that we're going through. The other one is removing two complex security from this complex. And in essence, what that'll do is, the security staff that we have working near full-time over here in this building will go away. And the armed security that we have that works the magnetometer in the jail, we used to staff that with jail staff. Up until about a year and a half ago, we transitioned that to using our complex security. And we have a plan internally to, uh, utilize another position to fill that over there. So that service will, will still be completed at the jail by another individual. And then our intention on this campus down here would be to have a, uh, security rover, so they wouldn't be stationed up here at the security station, but we would still have staff that would be available to come over for the, this next foreseeable year while the administrative building is still here, do some walkthroughs, and then as always, we'll have staff that are able to respond to any issues that we have. The impact that that'll have moving forward on the new building, obviously it's gonna have a bigger impact when we're on Concourse Drive, because we don't have the proximity to this campus. So there would be no security stationed with this change out at the, out at the, uh, Concourse Drive facility. However, we did build in, uh, some working stations for deputies, so I'd anticipate that our deputies, we currently have a Rapid Valley substation, that'll go away when Concourse opens up. And, and I would envision our deputies stopping there to write reports, uh, take reports, meet the public from Rapid Valley if we have issues in that area. So we will have a law enforcement presence in that building, it just won't be full-time. And then we would be able to staff up upon department head request if we had something contentious going on with the department, or, you know, when we're doing voting and those types of things, to be able to temporarily station staff out there, it just wouldn't be full-time like it is now. And then the couple of other cuts that I brought forward is, one is the Rapid City Youth Council, we funded them the last couple of years to the tune of about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, that's just pass-through money, they don't provide an, an actual service for us. I did feel that was a valuable investment, but when we're trying to make the difficult decisions as to whether we pass money through to other entities or get our staff pay where it needs to be so we can hire and retain, I think these are some of the discussions that we're gonna have to make, and it's not fun to stand up here and talk about cutting money to a youth organization that does the good that they do, when we, on the other hand, talk about what it costs us to incarcerate youth in our community, and I do think, you know, there's a real benefit in continuing to be involved in those types of entities and figuring out a way that we can partner together with them, but that is one of the cuts that I'm bringing today is fifteen thousand for that entity. Uh, the other cut that I have in this memo is, currently we're funding Wavy at, uh, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and I would, uh, the cut I'm bringing forward today is fifteen thousand dollars. They do have a full-time, a Wavy advocate that works in conjunction with our victims assistance folks in our building. Um, I haven't talked to Wavy as to whether that's a service, whether that fifteen thousand dollar cut would prohibit them from having staff over there, that's a really beneficial relationship. They do get some other pass-through dollars through the state's attorney's office, um, and they get some funding from the city too, in a lot of the cases, frankly, that they're working uh, in our facility and helping us with on the domestic violence team, our city-related cases, and I don't believe the, the city had cut any of their funding. They, they fund them at a higher level, I think maybe a hundred and some thousand dollars the city does pass through money to Wavy also. Um, so that was, that was one of the other cuts. And then, the rest of it, we would absorb the little bit that's remaining through, uh, some unfilled FTEs, and that gets a little bit tricky for us, because uh, also as Commissioner Hancock had mentioned earlier, with your question as to how did we absorb some of these things that we did in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three? Well, frankly, we've absorbed some of that through the fact that it's been difficult to hire. We've been running, you know, in the past, at that time, we were running, you know, twenty to twenty-five correction staff short. We're paying out a million dollars in overtime a year. We're still on track by the way to do that again this year. Um, so how we're absorbing some of those costs is with our unfilled, uh, FTEs, but it gets a little bit dangerous if we reel that back too far for me, because part of those FTEs, if we realize getting those FTEs filled, we can bring federal inmates back in that offset some of the revenue. So if we cut some of those unfilled, uh, unfilled, or anticipated unfilled FTEs, I would have to cut uh, corresponding, uh, marshal revenue also, which would be at a higher level than what the cost would be, so we could absorb a little bit of that, but I'd like to not dip any further into those, uh, uh, anticipated unfilled FTEs at the jail specifically, because I don't wanna have to cut that revenue back any further than we already have.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Sheriff, I got a couple of questions. I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm recognizing what is being said here. And, and the first part, you're talking about two hundred and eighty-five thousand increase so we can fix the compression, and then to get to that two eighty-five, these are the cuts that you're proposing so that it's the same budget number, but basically to help with the compression, this is how you're able to do it, it's just not gonna change any of the numbers as far as your overall budget. It's just moving money around so you can meet and fix those compressions. Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that is correct. What I'm presenting here today will, will, it'll change some line items for the auditor's office, but it won't change the bottom line on, I believe on option number one.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I was following.
And then, if I could make just a general comment on the wage study, because I know you're gonna jump into that next. I, I think we're on the verge of, of something pretty special with this wage study, and I know, and when we came up earlier and Joe and I had an opportunity to talk to you at the budget hearing about the wage study, I, I said this and I'll repeat it again, it's a complex process, and it, it can be frustrating and, and, uh, tough to look through and understand and comprehend all of it. I think that we've done a really good job of bringing the points forward, talking to the public, trying to keep the commission included in that process the best that we can, and I realize a lot of you are getting some of the particular details of it kinda late in the game, when you're starting to look at individuals, where they're at, what the percentage increases are. Um, but I can tell you, we've spent a significant ti, time, uh, amount of time on the other side of this, as department heads and elected officials, vetting out what those dollar amounts are and comparing those to our, our competitors, and I feel like we have a very good work product, although it's not perfect. Uh, what I would encourage you to do is to pass this wage study as we've got it presented to you today, knowing that we still have some work and some clarification to do. And I would, uh, encourage us to have some public meetings between now and the time that you have to do the final budget, and, uh, invite the public in, let the commission go through those numbers and tell us any ones that you think that might be a little bit out of whack, or need further explanation, or that are confusing, and let the department heads that have that particular job classification come in. We can talk through the comparables. Uh, we can talk through exactly where, where those people are being placed. We'll be very transparent with the public with that process. And, uh, just give us an opportunity to have that type of a discussion, and if there's some fine tuning that needs to be done, we could fine tune it with a few of those individuals that might need fine tuning, but not, not throw it out and try to start over and re-implement it step by step, because I think, I think we're at a ninety, ninety-five percent success rate when I look through that as to what we're able to accomplish with it, so. I would encourage you to pass that today as is. Our employees are watching, they're very excited about the, the possibility of not surpassing all of our competitors, but, you know, being able to go home and explain to their spouses that they're still making, uh, you know, they're looking at getting our wages back to at least comparable with our competitors here at the beginning of next year, so. I appreciate you guys' patience as we work through that, and, uh, I know that's some difficult decisions, but I'd highly encourage you to pass the wage study as we've implemented it, and then continue to work with us over the next couple of months to fine tune it and make sure that we're all comfortable with the particulars of it, so. I'd stand by for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Brian, I, I think it's a great idea to bring it forward and have public discussion on it. Uh, I think there's probably some things that need to be vetted, because I can't read through it and, and know all the answers and the details and things that look out of, out of whack or whatever, and just like any of us up here, I don't think any of us are gonna pick out a lot of different things. We, we may pick out some things that are out of whack or what we have perceived to be out of whack, but I think it's, it's important to have the public's input on it. And while I do commend the committee, I think there's a lot of good things have come out of it, and I, I've already said that, I just don't know if... don't know if I can support where it currently is based on the impact. I think there can be some other modifications to it. So while I may support having it public so we can have some conversations about it, I don't know if I can currently support it at its current level. That's just what I'm going to say there. But I do appreciate all the information that's come out of it and a lot of the work that's been done to kind of clarify what people's roles are, job descriptions and things that, of that matter, because I think that did need to happen.
Any further questions for Brian? So Cindy, for, for us to, for you to go through, he just brought forward, you need a little more time to be able to adjust the budget for that?
Yes, I would. Because I'm going to need the, the specific budget so that when you look at that budget summary, it's correct with what he's going to be presenting. And I know there's then some revenue offset, so you'll need an updated revenue report as well. I understand it's not an impact probably to the grand scheme of things, but I do need those specifics.
So we'd probably be good to put a motion to accept Brian's letter to increase the budget to 85 with the changes he's made, or give you direction to add that.
To decrease it. And then I would need time yet today to get those numbers. Do you, you have those specifics?
I sent those to you this morning.
Okay. Did not see that. So yes, as long as I have time to add those in, I can go upstairs and get those added in. So if you want to make that motion and make, go through the rest and then maybe take a break and then I can bring back the final.
Okay.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I think he's decreasing it.
Mr. Chair.
He's taken 285 and he's decreased.
His own budget, yes.
Yes. And so we need to vote on what he's decreased, basically like we did everybody else to make that budget. No?
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Go ahead Travis.
Let her finish her thought.
So bottom line is, I guess what I got was he increased it with compression of 285. Then he tried to find solution by his cuts to make up for the 285, which I appreciate. So it would be to accept his reduction through what he's talking about, through his 40,000 on mental health, his Wavy, his youth, and some of his FTEs. And then if we need more discussion, just like we did on Dave Purcell, I think we can bring that forward and say, you know, we don't agree with that. But at this point, I think we've accepted everybody else's. And, and then we're getting forth again in, in the next budget session. But I'm going to agree with the 285 cut and where he's cut at this point. Now while I agree with it after the final budget, I think some of these areas for where Brian cut for some of his FTEs and stuff in the back of this memo need to stay in there as well. But I would agree to cut the, cut everybody on there and then come back with what we think for final budget.
Mr. Lassiter.
Mr. Chair, it's, it's just a net zero. It's not a cut. It's not an increase. It's, he's adjusting his budget, reducing parts of his budget so that he can make the accommodations. It's, it's a, it's a zero. It's not an increase or a decrease. I agree. We should accept his letter. I'm just want to make sure that it's understood that there's, there's no increase or decrease. It's, it's an even.
Right. I got that. Thank you.
Mr. Drews. So I guess I'd just look for a motion to accept his recommendation letter from July 17th and give Cindy time to review that. We'll take a, a break.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I heard moved by Ron, seconded by Drews, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I did have, I did put fire service up here. And my reasoning was, is I'd just like a little clarification from Jerome on some fundings in the reserve
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Cindy, can you provide us with a summary of the cuts that we've seen so far relative to the decrease of FTEs? So the public defender was 400,000.
Yes, that's the number I wrote.
And building and grounds was?
195,800.
One, one what?
195,800.
Okay.
And then state's attorney was 333,800. 333.
Then highway was a plus 85?
80,043.
And then the court of plants was a?
That was an increase of 103,000.
So Jerome, my question was, and I apologize. I was looking at the wages and the income, the money coming in, and they're very close to the same with the increases. So I'm curious to how we're going to support your office through the years without any support from other local entities, like the other fire departments. Your budget being as it is, your salary and wages are 185,25. And then with the retirement and everything else, it's I was just wondering if we had a plan in the future?
The majority of what we see as far as the increase in wages has been through our workers' compensation. And we already were able to cut 50,000 on the workers' compensation to cut the bill back on that. And then the majority of the workers' compensation is billed back to the entity that, that's insurance that we essentially are selling forward to save the taxpayers. As far as being on a larger pool, that's for the departments that have part-time or maybe some career personnel sprinkled, sprinkled, sprinkled in the volunteer fire service and then the Hill City ambulance service. And those are direct billed to those entities. And then they bill, they pay us back for that.
So Mr. Chair, can I get clarification to that? You said you, you bill the entity, the workers' comp, and then they pay you back?
Yeah. If it's, if it doesn't meet the classification under the state statute as far as volunteer fires, volunteer firefighter, which is clearly in the state statute, comes out of the general fund, we have to pay for those people. And that's, we roughly 450, 475 slots of workers' compensation that we purchase. And then anybody, anything that's above that, if they have a, a part-time, they may pay their fire chief some pain and suffering money. They may have an admin personnel. They may have some stipend personnel. We work directly with the South Bend Municipal Representative to make sure we have all those positions covered. Any of those positions that require workers' compensation in the Hill City Ambulance District are directly billed to reimburse that cost. So it isn't, it's a, essentially a pass-through. I don't know if that's a good explanation or not.
Thank you.
That's the single biggest increase that we've seen is in this workers' compensation. And then when we, when we did the numbers on the workers' compensation, working directly again with representatives, we saved over $50,000 just on our ask on that upfront, which is pretty significant.
Because your proposed budget's 503,850 with the 5%. Miscellaneous revenue 651,000, cash applied 184,39. And that's about, that's where your personnel costs. Maybe I'm lost. Well, anyhow, I thought those, I'll get, I'll do some more research on it before. I just wanted to bring you aware, I was, I was looking at that in the reserves because it seems like some of the reserves that we, we do, we can't add them into unassigned once they're transferred over and, and.
The, the reserve fund is, any reserves that we're building on our five and 10-year plan is the pay, pay now or pay more later syndrome. And that's what we want to prevent as we've talked to before, is we don't want that gotcha. And that's, I want to prevent, you know, you guys were talking about that earlier. And on our reserve fund, that is very much the preventing kicking the can down the road. We stopped some things because of the pandemic. We stopped some things because of some of the incidents that we've had to make sure we had the money to pay for them. I just don't want to put you or future commissions in a position of going, we need this amount of money, surprise. That's what we're trying to do through that reserve fund.
Okay. Chair, I got Mr. Drews.
So Jerome, on the reserve fund, I, I don't, I don't think, and this is my fault, I don't think it was my intent to, to allow that reserve fund to continue to accumulate as it has over the years. I agreed back three or four years ago that there needed to be a reserve fund. But it looks like you now have 500,000 in that reserve fund and you're looking at adding another 200,000 to it?
Uh, what, we have some purchases that are coming out of that, but certainly we can, when we talked to you earlier and a member, Commissioner Ross, were asking about that, we're very, we're more comfortable with it being at half a million than we were before. Absolutely. So there's no reason we can't take some money out of that reserve fund. Get some numbers to Cindy here for her numbers.
So are, are you suggesting we could remove the request of the 200,000?
I would, I would be comfortable with it leaving 100,000 in there with the stuff that we're seeing and taking 100,000 out of that.
Mr. Chair.
I got head dab first, but.
I just want to clarify what fund that was. That's all I want to know. So I'm looking.
It's on the reserve, 459, reserve accumulation. Is it here? Federal Fund 101. Yeah, right there. Where do you see the accumulation? It'll fill the 500,000? Yeah. Oh, that's 100,000.
Never mind. I just wanted to clarify that I'm looking at the right spot.
Okay. Ms. Hancock.
Chair, so your reserves right now are at 500,000? Val, can you answer that? Val probably knows.
Yeah, I believe that's right. I passed Cindy for the exact number.
And you asked for 200 this year? And why, why that reserve came to where it is is because of the cost for fire service for this county that we would be required to pay. At this point, I get what you're saying, Commissioner Drews, but I also see that we get PILT money for emergency services for these forest areas and, and basically for first responders and other areas. And then it looks like we have an increase that and it goes into the general fund. So that's why we started doing this is because for fire service responders and, and having 450 responders in this, I know there's levies and there's other areas to cover, but this county could be and has in the past got stuck with some pretty big bills and said, you guys, that's your responsibility. So I can honestly tell you, I don't know where those reserves need to be at this point, depending on what's going to happen in the future, because I can't tell what that future's going to be. But I agree, I would keep it at the 100,000 if that's where they're going. But back in the past, when I first started, we had a retirement of a fire administrator and basically drained all those reserves back then. And I think they had at least a million in there before. So if I knew the future and that, that a cost for what would ha- happen if we did not have that money, we just saw what happens to our reserves and what could happen if we had that type of emergency. So in this case, I would agree on the 100,000.
I, I agree. I don't know. I think 500 is a good amount. And you're absolutely right. Part of that PILT money goes into the general fund, but that's not to say that a person, you have 500 in reserves, that you'd have to come back to the commission and they'd have that to offer.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, as we've talked to you before, and you guys have been understanding on that is if we have it upfront, we're able to bring in the resources that we don't have access to with our normal suppression inventory. There's no hesitation and we stop that. And that's where that down, we stop that downstream negative effect. And the other thing is, is we know the infrastructure. We've dated that. We know the stuff that's going out. We've actually kind of kicked the can down the road because of some other incidents and because of the pandemic, we kind of held off a little bit. But our, that money is like the commissioner has described here is essentially PILT money that comes through there. And that's what that money is for. So we just don't want to get you or another commission jammed up down the road with, when we replace an infrastructure and say, hey, surprise.
So any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So PILT money isn't just reserved for like fire service.
No.
I mean, it's, it's designed to replace money that we do not receive. The county doesn't receive from forest land. Normally if it was privately owned, would be property taxes. And so we have a wide latitude on how that money is actually used in our budget. And I don't think we really, for the most part, were broken out and said, okay, we're going to, we're going to do 50,000 here from the PILT funds and so forth. I, I think it's all brought into the general fund, is it not Cindy?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. It all goes into the general fund for general fund purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
So from what I've heard so far is Jerome is okay with instead of an ask of 200,000, it being 100,000.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hancock.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
So Jerome, and just because I was following this, in 2022 and 2023, you didn't ask for any reserve accumulation. And is that because we did those grant dollars for the fire departments?
Right.
Because that's what those were?
We worked pretty closely, I'm sorry, Commissioner. We worked really closely with, with Cindy here and make sure we didn't jam you guys up on anything and you guys moved that money to help with those fire stations, which again affects that whole downstream effect. If we don't have, you know, three-legged milks, is three legs that you need. And one of them is facilities. And if we don't have decent facilities, it affects everything else that's going on. So you guys were generous enough to help out with that. And we understand that. The Fire Service Board is very appreciative of that.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood.
Mr. Drews. Cindy, do you have the history on that reserve? I don't have it here. But it seemed to me like we had provided like 100,000 in 2021, 100,000 in 2022, 200,000 in 2023, 200,000 in 2024.
Let me just pull that up, but I think you're correct. Yeah, we started in 2022 with setting, excuse, I hope I'm missing something here. I think it was 100,000 and then we did 200 and then 200 more in '24.
Okay. I don't remember a year of missing.
No, I don't believe there was a year since we've started putting that money in the general fund assigned for fire reserve. We've not missed a year of adding anything to that.
Mr. Chair, I'm only just sitting here for the actual, and it said grants to entities the million, but then it doesn't say reserve accumulation. There wasn't a number there. So I'm just wondering if the chart's missing the number.
I think it is.
Okay. Any further questions?
Oh, excuse me, Mr., sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lassiter, what you're seeing on there is the actual spent. So it was budgeted and it was moved to reserves, but it was not actual spent. That's the spreadsheet there. So what you're seeing is actual, not what was budgeted.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's why that's not in there.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? Any further discussion? The motion is to reduce the reserve to a $100,000 ask instead of two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks Jerome. Before we get to last item on my agenda is the wage study implementation discussion. I think Cindy, you need some time to run the numbers and so maybe we should take a short break and come back.
Yes, if there's no more revisions you want to make from option one, I would need some time to go back and.
Is there any further changes?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Just one thing that I would suggest that we consider is that currently Pennington County provides the opportunity for commissioners to be covered by the healthcare program. County provides the opportunity for commissioners to be covered by the healthcare program. And I think there's 24 of the counties now in South Dakota that no longer provide that as an option. And I'm going to suggest that we look at doing that, of not providing that as a benefit. We're not full-time employees. We don't receive other benefits like the retirement. And I just think it'd be good on our part that we not offer that to commissioners.
Chair.
Are you done? Ms. Hancock.
Being the only one that uses it on here, I understand, but I also am not retired. You are retired and a couple of people are retired and have other areas to get them. That, and I think at this point, it's one of those benefits that I think is, is needed for us. I think, I appreciate that benefit, just like the employees do, to have that choice. I'm the only one I, I believe that is on here that uses that at this point. And I disagree. And not because I'm self-serving, I think the people in the past, all we have to do is look at how many commissioners have used that on this commission besides me. I know some of you have used it before. That should tell you what that number should be or if that should be cut.
Mr. Chair.
I got Lassiter first, now I'll go back.
One more thing. I also believe when we take mileage and travel, those numbers are pretty high. So if we need to cut in areas, let's look at all areas where we could take those costs and be cut instead of just healthcare and I'd be in favor of that.
Mr. Lassiter.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I would ask in this stand, you know, in this level, Minnehaha and Pennington County are two busiest out of all the counties that I'm aware of. I mean, I don't, I don't know the total time that Minnehaha commissioners put into their time, but I do know that when I came on board, I didn't realize how many hours we put into it and, and maybe that doesn't matter or not. However, I do know that if I was retired and didn't have another job, I think it would be appropriate. I have another job, but I realize also there's a lot of work to be done in Pennington County. So I think someone who is going to only, who's going to be retired and then work as a commissioner, I think it is beneficial and it's appropriate for them to have that option. Not because it's any of you, but any of you who, if you retired, I mean, Ron, you worked full-time, I believe. Am I correct? You still work full-time?
I did until I became a commissioner.
No, then you worked double time. Same with you Lloyd, I believe you have a full-time job, is that correct?
I do.
Yep.
Well, technically no.
Okay, technically no. I do, I have a full-time job. So I do know that between my full-time job and my commission time, I consistently put in 60 to 80 hours very easily and 20 to 30 of them are easily commissioned. And if I didn't have a full-time job, I could probably put 40 hours in with, with my district at a minimum from my district and the committees and stuff. So I guess if we're going to look at it, I think you got to look at the workload. I mean, I can understand smaller communities, why they would cut that off because they're trying to cut that cost and they don't have, their commissioners aren't working 20, 30 hours a month or a week. So it's just something to be careful about because if we have other commissioners in the future that they're retired and they need a little help, but they're going to work 40 hours a week easily, now you're cutting off something that is beneficial to them and we may not get individuals who are interested in being part of serving the community that have the time to put into it to serve it correctly. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Drews.
Mr. Chair. So I'm on, I'm on Medicare, but I could qualify, I believe, for the healthcare benefit also instead of obtaining an outside supplement for mine. And so, and I think that probably goes for, for most of them. I just think that it's a cost to the taxpayer, if we talk about cost to taxpayers, that they shouldn't have to be responsible for. Commissioner Hancock, you know, you've mentioned several times that you and your husband run successful businesses. I would think that, you know, through your businesses, you would obtain your healthcare rather than put it on the, on the taxpayers. It's about a $10,000 a year cost per commissioner if you're on the program. So over a period of years, that equates to a lot of dollars. And so, and so I think that joining the other 24 counties that have already taken the action of not offering that as a benefit, I think is something we should strongly consider. Thank you.
Chair.
Then I need to make a comment before we go second, if you're okay with that.
Yes, sir.
I do work full-time and I do take my insurance from my employers. But I do take part of the benefits from the county, which is the vision and dental also. Now, would I need to do that? No, because I'm double-doubled. So, but that was a choice that, that I made. I'd look at this, I've been a county employee many, many years ago, you know, and even in the private sector, you have to work a minimum of 32 hours a week to be considered part-time to, or benefited part-time. And yes, there are weeks that are busier, this month's busier than most and, and some commissioners probably put in more time than others, but in general, you know, commissioners, it's very clear are not considered, we're trying to say we're employees, but we're not. It's either are or not, you know. I, I think if you, if you talk to some of the new commissioners coming on, when they're on the city council pays way less. That's why they offered benefits to them. You know, I think the commissioners, when I looked at the budgets, it's like 30,000, they figure 30,000 a year, which is, I don't have a problem with the county having insurance, but I think maybe they pay the full rate, not get the discount. You know, I've talked to the employees, many of the employees have family plans because Pennington County is cheaper than the private sector. And so I look at it that way too, you know. It's, it's consideration. We made a lot of, I think departments made a lot of sacrifices and changes and maybe, you know, maybe we may make changes to the commission's salaries and part of the budget, pay more, maybe not. I don't know. I think, I think it's good for discussion though. Ms. Hancock.
Chair, we had had this discussion, I remember Holly and Gary bringing it up about taxpayer dollars when we were talking about travel and per diem. I spend about $345 and maybe a thousand where there was emergency that happened in, what, nine years, five years? Some of you have 19,000, 18,000 and stuff. And so you're saying 10,000 that we should save the taxpayer dollars off of me when some of you have spent on those taxpayer dollars on travel. But we're talking about cutting, which I'm okay. If you want to cut those benefits, then you cut the travel and you cut the other perks that you're getting as a chairman or as a, as a board. I work 40 hours a week doing this job. I believe that I should and the rest of the people on this board, if they'd like a benefit of healthcare, should have that choice. And I understand where you're coming from Lloyd, because next year you won't be here and those cuts aren't going to make a difference in what you're talking about. But those other people, why don't you talk to other people that might need that or that have always liked that? Like I said, look at the past, some of you have used these benefits before and now some of you retired or on Medicare. This is a big county, this is a lot of work and I enjoy doing this work, but part of, for me, is I switched it from traveling and not learning the information online, so I wouldn't spend taxpayer dollars, unlike some of you, so I would get that benefit and that taxpayer dollar that was spent on me would be on my benefits. So there's a give and take on each side and to cut one and not the other when it affects both sides, whether you're traveling or you're getting a healthcare, let's go, let's go there on both occasions or both cuts. Because again, some of this is not a have-to. Benefits for me are a have-to. Travel's not a have-to. When I travel, I don't put it on the taxpayer diamond. You're right Lloyd, that $30,000 that I get, I use it for my travel. I use it for, I don't use it for my phone because most of my, most of my time is spent on the phone with taxpayers or people. The other part is that I don't have to travel anymore and I haven't traveled on this because I saw, saw what our budget was on that and I figured, because I didn't get that explanation I was hit with, you spend money Deb on your benefits and none of us do. So to be fair, 24 counties have done it and I agree with Travis. I appreciate that thought. But again, I've always been fair and just about taxpayer dollars that I've spent to answer both of your questions that day. I did not think about it till later, that mine is actually less what you've spent on me taxpayers than you have spent on other commissioners that don't get benefits. So I agree, we need to keep the benefits unless we are going to cut all of it and just say with the 30,000, you're going to pay for all of it. You're going to pay for your travel and the things you want to do, to be fair, on cutting somebody else that actually needs benefits. Thank you.
Well, I think this is good discussion. I don't think it was targeted for anything, it was, I brought it up. Quite frankly, we got some more time to have discussion on this and talk, I think, or whatever we need to do, but.
Chair.
I'm married in the middle. I'll put you in line.
I got you.
That's my thoughts on this. My thoughts are, no offense Deb, it's not targeted to one, it's the big picture and, you know, and then all this other stuff gets brought up, you know, the travel, I made the motion a long time ago that the per diems and, and expenses that they absorb those costs to save taxpayers money and the commissioners have done that. I think this is just an item that was brought up for discussion and, and when you, it's, it's a fair one, I think, so. Ms. Hancock.
Chair, I think it's fair, but what I also noticed when this came up before, nobody else talked about benefits that everybody else gets, they only talked about what I got compared for taxpayer dollars. So I didn't think it was fair that day. And then bringing it up today, I get it. It, it's a good discussion. But when you're speaking about that, make sure you put all the numbers down and not just, and bring those numbers forward on what this, the 30,000, the wages, the mileage, the travel, and then discuss, have a, have a full-fledged discussion and, and I'm, I'm ready to do that if that's what we need to do on cutting benefits or cutting pay or cutting travel, covering budgets, paying for communities to come here, things like that that have come out of our contingencies. Let's talk about all those things that we spend money on. Thank you.
Well, this is a work session and that's.
But that's what I'm saying, let's put it all together.
That's why it was brought up is it, it's a work session and for discussion or, or action, so. Looks like I've got one last, is there anything else on the subject before this point? No? Annette looks like you wanted to make.
Yes, thank you Commissioners. Before your break and when you come back, you're going to be talking about the wage study, so I just wanted to, in case any of you are using the break to look over that wage study more, one of the things Deb had mentioned about the compression that she's seen in other departments, the difference between this wage study that the committee came up with and the Gallagher one, was Gallagher only used your hire date and the committee, this, this wage study uses the time of that employee in that position. So we have people that are moving up, but they, just because they maybe were here for six years, maybe they're only in that new position for six months or a year or whatever. So I just wanted to add that in case you do use the time to look at the wage study.
Chair.
Okay. Ms. Hancock.
Thank you Annette, because that clarifies some of the stuff on that. That's why I said I'm not ready to vote on a wage scale, because some of that stuff, other people don't know and that I don't know. And I can tell you, and I'm pretty much betting that the department, or the commissioners have not went through the current and what it is today, or I'm sorry, what it was before on the scale, your departments and your people and where you are now based on these job descriptions. That's a lot of work to try to figure out. I'm not micromanaging one set, but I'm trying to understand through what this work has done, well, how you came up with your bottom line, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. And just, just don't, don't just look at the hire date, that's the, that's the main thing I wanted to put across. Thank you.
I'd look for a motion to take, what do you need, 15 minutes?
Some move.
Half hour.
Can we at least have a half hour?
Oh, some moved. Half hour.
So we'll reconvene at, let's say 11 o'clock?
Thank you.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll look for a motion to come back into special budget session.
Some move.
Moved by Lassiter.
Second.
Seconded by Yuraskovak. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. What we'll do is while we're waiting for Cindy, we'll go ahead and take up the wage study implementation. I do, Mr. Lassiter wants to make a quick comment and then I'll call Carol to talk about the wage study implementation. So I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Lassiter.
I just want to make sure that it was clarified since I misunderstood something and one of our gave out a number that we were, you know, we're trying to cut and then we were at positive, the number I gave, whenever I talked to Joe Miller from Highway, his 80,000 that was in there when it came off, it wasn't an increase or decrease of the budget because it was coming out of those road and bridge funds. It just means he had 80,000 that would go back into a project or something. So it was, removing that 80,000 didn't gain or increase, so it was a net zero, just kind of like the sheriffs, the way he adjusted his. So that would put us at, just quick numbers, this isn't perfect, that we've reduced 51,000, not added 49,000 is what I was getting. Wanted to make sure that I was clarifying.
Wanted to clarify that. Okay. Thank you Travis. With that, I will call up HR, Carol Bancroft, to kind of go over the wage increase versus premium increases and so forth and the wage study.
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. So I think a couple of things that I've heard this morning that I'd just like to clarify as far as the wage study is concerned and when we placed our current employees on the current wage scale that we're proposing, that compression issues, as Brian indicated, that the only part that was not initially addressed was for public safety, which that is what Brian did clarify. So the process that we used is that we worked with each one of the department heads and we had the master wage scale as far as just having them put their people onto the wage scale and it was a what-if analysis that they could do. And that allowed them to identify within their own departments if there were any compression issues. And then once we had all of that addressed, which it was a lot of interaction back and forth between myself as well as with the department heads, then, then we put all of those together on what we called the master scale. So all current county employees were put onto the master scale. And then we sent that back out to all the department heads so that they could see if there were compression issues for same type of position between the departments and years of service in that current position, that we could look to see if there were any outliers or any compression issues across departments. And so those were all resolved. I'm not going to sit here and say that it's perfect because, you know, until you actually do implement it, there may be some that we didn't catch through that process, but am I confident that we have a very good product at the end of it? That it is definitely addressing the compression issues, that we won't see what we did with the Gallagher implementation? That I can sit here and say with 100% confidence that we have done a really solid job of putting the current employees on. of putting the current employees onto the scale and addressing compression issues. And yes, there may still be some that will come forward as an outlier, once it's actually implemented. But again, I feel like we have done a really great job of addressing that right up front. Something else that I do want you to know is that we have 759 employees and that does include any open positions that we are going to be moving onto the wage scale if it's approved. And those are the hourly employees, 759. So that's 85% of our employees. And 81% of the funds that we're requesting are for those 85% of employees. And then for our exempt, that does not include the department heads, that that is 122 employees or 14% of our employees, and I can repeat these numbers if you'd like. But that, they are recommended for 18% of the funds. And then the department heads, that that includes 11 employees that have been adjusted in 2024, that that equates to 1.23% of the employees on the new wage scale. And that is about half a percent of the funds are going towards that. And when I talk about half of a percent, then it's because we have that 1.5% COLA that we're recommending as part of moving people onto the wage scale. So that is the majority of what that money is for, is the COLA. So hopefully that will help you as well. Something else that I think would be important for you to know is that when we went through the comparative study with comparative entities, that we looked at what was the median and we used a very statistical approach to that. That if there was an outlier that was higher than the standard deviation from the other comparable data, either higher or lower, that those data points were thrown out. So we were looking at truly what is comparative data to find that median. And as you look across the five pay bands, being the professional, the technical, the support, the public safety and the medical, that where we came with our midpoint on the wage scale, that for the professional band, it's 17% below the maximum of the comparable data. On the technical, it's 18% below. And on the support, it's 17% below the maximum. The public safety is 13% below and the medical is 10% below the maximum of those ranges for the comparable data. If you look at the minimum, because our compensation policy that the commissioners did implement for part of this wage study, is that we knew that we couldn't be the highest paying. We also knew we didn't want to be the lowest, we wanted to hit that mid-range. And I think this wage scale does hit that objective. So as far as the minimum, when you're looking at the professional positions, that our wage scale does come in 5% above where the minimum was of the comparable data. And 13% above the technical minimum. And 5% above the support minimum. And 19% above the public safety. And 14% above the medical. And I'd be happy to provide that data for you. But I think those are important things to know and understand as we continue to talk about the wage scale. One last thing before we really get into more of the detail of the wage scale is that looking at comparable counties, that what are they doing for 2025? That Minnehaha County is doing a 3% increase plus a 2% that, so a total of 5% is what they are doing. And the 2% is through the step process. Gankton is doing 4.2% plus a 2.2%. Lincoln County is doing a 3% plus a 2.5%. And Hughes County is looking at a flat 4%. So what we're recommending to move onto the wage scale is a 1.5%. And that enables us then to get to a better place on the wage scale by just limiting ourselves to a COLA of 1.5%. Which also, in addition to Pennington County employees, that elected officials through resolution do get that 1.5% if it's approved. So that COLA of 1.5% would be across the board. So, I guess, as far as the wage study, if you look at the sheet that has the pros and cons, this is something important that we felt the committee would like you to have a really close intimate look at as far as why is it important to implement the wage scale? And that's because it's unlike any previous ones that have been done because it's been customized to fit Pennington County. And I want to say a very special thank you to the commission across the board that one of the things we have resoundingly heard is that we have taken such a close look at every position in the county and we have made sure that the position descriptions, position descriptions and the pay bands suit Pennington County. That that's the most thorough look that has ever been done as far as our positions and making sure that they were accounted for correctly and scored correctly. So as far as some of the other things, it's been a very transparent process. And so the rating system, that it's going to be a legacy tool that can move forward, that any one of our department heads can take a position that they might be recommending in the future and they can score that out with the scoring system. They're not totally dependent on HR to do that for them in the back room, so to speak. It also, it does set that solid foundation for moving forward. That this is a tool, that it belongs to Pennington County. And so it is something that can be utilized going into the future and it was designed to be such. It does position us also to be competitive wages. As I said, it's not the highest paying type of wage scale and when you compare it to our comparable entities, but it no longer would be the lower either. So, one of the things I think the commission will feel really good about if you will implement this wage scale, is that it will reduce the number of exceptions that need to come to the commission. You know, whether it be an executive session or in public session, that we have addressed those exceptions right up front when we placed our employees onto the scale. So it will definitely, our employees are waiting to see what it is that we are going to support them with. So it's going to increase the morale throughout Pennington County to be able to implement this and know that we have addressed the compression issues right up front. So, that positions us not only to attract new talent by having a wage scale that's more competitive in the labor force, but also to retain our employees. So it's with that degree of confidence that you've heard some of our department heads come forward and say that they're not going to request new FTE until they know that they can solidly seat in the open positions that they have and make sure that we are retaining the employees. So some of the things that if we do not implement it, that we're at risk of losing those talented employees to other employers because that has been what's been going on with our attrition. So we'll also continue to fall behind further to any of our comparable entities. And, you know, I read to you as far as what they're doing as far as cost of living increases and step increases for their employees. It's also, there's continued and/or increased exception requests because we still, it's not equitable across all of the different departments and, and it's something that it keeps getting surfaced, you know, as people are getting promoted is one reason why you might see that, that there would be continued exceptions coming forward. And so it's also, if we're not competitive in the labor force, that people are having to go beyond what our current policies are. And I think Davis did a really good job of explaining that when he presented his budget, is that he explained that in order to attract custodian applicants, that he needs to go to the highest step that he can on the scale, which is step 12. And then after that, there's nothing that he can do for those individuals unless there's a COLA or a step increase that's granted. And so it's definitely, it's going to help us with that. It doesn't fix the base rates for the positions that fell $2 to $5 behind on the Gallagher scale. You know, one of the documents that you have in your packet talks about some of those positions. It doesn't fix as far as our attorneys, it doesn't fix our correction officers and deputy sheriffs, it doesn't correct our custodians or our technical maintenance positions like for HVAC, et cetera. And so that's one of the things that we, we really encourage you to take a long hard look at that and to keep struggling with those positions and not pay fairly for them is just not the right thing to go. So, a very lurking variable that is here that I think you do need to be aware of is if we don't implement the wage scale, that we are at risk of our attrition continuing to increase. And we're working hard to decrease that attrition rate and turnover, but we could be back at an increase of 9% over the figures that I gave you when we talked about the state of employment. If we lose an increase of 9% of our employees, that that would equate to 76 employees and the average, just the average training cost across our departments is about 60,500. Some departments a lot more significant than that. But that number, when you do the math on it, is 4,598,000 annual cost to the county. And then if you increase also the overtime because you have that many open positions that you're having difficulty hiring for, the correction officers are an excellent example of that, that the number of hours that they've had to work in overtime, that you can easily, and it's a very conservative number, that's somewhere between 500,000 and a million dollars extra. So we could be looking at 5.1 million to 5.6 million of hidden costs if we don't implement the wage scale. So, I guess with that, I'll stand for questions on any specifics that you'd like me to answer.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskineck.
So Carol, that 60,500 average training cost, does that include sending them to some type of a training seminars? Or does it include, like for an example, the Director of Equalizations Office? They get a new appraiser, then you have to take an experienced appraiser to teach him. So then that experienced appraiser is now not fully productive because they're taking their time to teach a trainee. So are we taking into account the loss productivity of the experienced employee that's got to teach or the new employee?
Very good question. I guess I would say that, you know, when you look at the handout that we have for you that talks about the employee training costs by the different departments, that it's a hidden cost that is in there. So there's a very conservative approach to that as far as what's in that number. But it also includes as far as the individual themselves that's been hired. How long does it take them to get up to more efficiencies as well as they need to go through the certification processes? So the certifications themselves, there's cost to that, so that's all buried in that number.
Chair. Is there any other questions, Carol?
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
So I'm looking at the changes of the revised, where they implemented it in their budgets, but I'm seeing some people with higher changes than others. And what I see from that and this, just from doing budgets myself, is some people already had their people where that scale was pretty close. And it looks like, on this comparable, that's what's happened. So that means the Gallagher, if you didn't have that many changes unless we made that many exceptions and compression and stuff, which I haven't seen that, what was the, the main issues with Gallagher? And it's not proving on your percentages, what I'm seeing for changes on some of, on a lot of the department heads. I believe the work that was done on here, I agree with Brian. It's a complex process and numbers you can throw out, percentages and numbers and how many we're going to lose and what ifs. But I've been through Gallagher study, I've been through Condray study from City and here. And you guys are saying, and this is what I'm saying, you are saying the same thing, the same percentages, the same losses, the same things that everybody else has said. And, and we have changed this process because of it. And now, being up straight, I have to believe that this is better because that's what everybody else has said and that's why we made the changes, we spent the money, we got the professionals to do it. And then we come back and we say, no, Pennington County is going to do it different, we're going to do it better. I appreciate that. But you got to see some of what I'm feeling because I've been through this process over and over again. And then also, in '23 and '24, watched this wage study that was never implemented getting implemented way before it was even voted on. Even before it was passed. And then I don't see those numbers. So I think for, to be fair and to be up straight, everything should come in a number that, I didn't see the changes. Maybe you changed them in between when you did your wage comparables and your market analysis on some of the changes you made in '23 and '24 with the department heads, Carol? But that's why I said, I'm not seeing some of that. Where, where did you change people back then and where did you put them now and did they get increases? Because what I'm looking at, okay, and I know every one of you department heads and every one of you commissioners probably didn't go through those, I wanted to see it because I wanted to see the changes. Did the people that got those excessive increases that were supposed to be already put on the wage scales in the market analysis, where are they now? And are they getting increases now? Some of them are and they not, they are high. Now, I haven't, to be fair, I haven't went through all of them, so I'm not going to make certain areas or, and we have time as you say, so I'm good with it. Annette brought up some good points on hire, I only got to go to two. One I missed, the second one, you guys were going to meet with me and we changed the date, that kind of thing. You've met with the new commissioners, I get it, on some of the three steps and stuff. But this needs to be vetted through the employees for public disclosure, so they know it's happening. I've talked to some department heads, some actually got it. And the ones, some people have no idea what I'm talking about on some of the things that you guys have told me up here or otherwise, on medians and some other stuff. So that tells me that department heads, some understand it all and some don't. Are they, are our department heads trained in what compression does and do they do those numbers? Do they know how to do those numbers, have those numbers been run through you? Number two, and it makes me sad because significant time is, it was supposed to take 18 months or a year to process and we're still processing it. And we're ready to implement it. I don't think in my, from, from what I've seen, it's not ready to be implemented in '25. I think when people, and I'll just speak for people that have visited with me as employees, when people got excessive wage increases and then you come back and you say, you're going to give me a 1.5 and put me on the scale, where I should be, I think you should vet it through the employees. I think you should see what they think about in '23, '24 and what they're getting in '25, if this process worked efficiently and effectively, as all you department heads say. Be up straight with all this. So, I believe it's not perfect, nothing is. But I also see, again, the public and employees, I think it still needs to be vetted so they have a full understanding of what they're paying for and what they're going to get in the end. Did you all do that? If you didn't, maybe I misunderstood it. Job descriptions, current and new, I'd like to know if you, elected officials read this? Because some of these are high increases and job descriptions that I don't believe should be implemented on those kind of scales and that kind of money. I'm sorry. Wage comparable on those, I get it. But why change a job description to make a comparable so you can give somebody a higher wage? Some of it looks like that and that's why I said, I have more questions, I might be wrong, I'm okay with that. wrong, I'm okay with that. Compression, I see some of it and Brian brought some of that forward, that might not be perfect. But what happens is even in Gallagher where they were professionals as well, 2.3 came for, million dollars of compression. And then we had excessive wage increases and different stuff going behind the scenes. How much did that cost? And was that Gallagher? Because when I was in this process, it had nothing to do with Gallagher. It had nothing to do with wage studies and market analysis, to be fair, Carol. Some of it was because somebody left and they didn't feel that they were paid enough, these people were paid enough. And let's be straight up, some of those areas weren't, weren't done with comparables or market analysis. And that wasn't on you, some of that has to do with department heads and us agreeing that the, you know, we agree with this. Changes on the wage scale for '22, '23 and '24 were significant, 1.2 that I know about and then adding this to it and maybe not being perfect and having some more compression. Did we do a comparable compared to Gallagher and what happened in those and how much that cost us through compression and other things, to be fair? And everybody says how great it is, but nobody showed me the real numbers.
So if I can interject here, Commissioner Hancock, that in 2022, the adjustments based on what needed to be done in order to address some of the concerns that came forth from the Gallagher study, that was 821,000. And then as far as what the commissioners initiated, which was both for the department heads as well as for elected officials, that was 172,000. And then what was brought forward by department heads for different adjustments, that was 133. So as far as the number that you gave of the 1.2 million, that all of those adjustments, all the way back to January of 2022, there was 821,000. And the rest of it was done in 2023 and the total was 1.1 million for all of those adjustments from 2022 through 2024.
Okay, so if I added all the ones we did in executive session and came out, you added those. Because the only thing I saw on the list was the things we voted on up front and not the executive session exceptions. I saw some of them, maybe the department heads and a couple other elected officials, but I did not see the increases based on some of the individual employees.
And, you know, I would say that that's fractional in comparison to this number that was done for individual employees.
Okay, we're going to have to agree to disagree on that from me looking at the numbers. So I will have to, I guess individually, I'll have to go through it and find all the numbers myself because I thought that was part of why we were changing, is we were going to add every number. And what we did was we missed some of them that actually I think are substantial. And here, here's the biggest issue, that we absorbed them in these budgets and they were some pretty big increases. So to me, I understand you not using FTEs and things like that, but to the general public when they're watching this and they keep saying we absorbed it and we absorbed it and we absorbed it, what do you think they think? And you don't have, we don't have full discussion on how we are absorbing it and why are we, what are we getting rid of and what are we going to do different in our department when we're going to absorb it? That's a full discussion for the public because again, I'll keep saying, the people that are paying our wages, that's why we have a public, that's why we are accountable to these people on how we spend our money. So to me, and you already know the feelings on some of the wage and stuff, I don't think was very transparent. This, this, what we're doing here to make it more transparent, needs to go to the public and they need to have public hearings. We don't put it in a budget because we got to rush it and get it done in '25. That's not how you do a process this big. You know how long it took us to implement Gallagher? We couldn't even do it the first year and then we had to put it off for another year just because of all the areas. And those people actually supposedly did it thoroughly and it was like no other and there would be hardly any compression. Everything I've heard today. So Carol, I love that you did all the work with Brian and the committees and I think that was commendable, but I think some of the numbers for me aren't adding up. Some of the changes that are current and not with job descriptions for me, I'm not in agreement with. And I don't think if they agreed, meaning commissioners or people read these, are you in agree with, with these job description changes? Because I'm not. So I am trying to thoroughly vet this as well, as well, and then vote on this saying, I'm going to trust that y'all did a good job when I'm already seeing discrepancies. And then if I talk about it sometimes, I'm just being facetious. I'm not. I'm trying to figure out through this process and through what I've seen for the last couple of years, I've not agreed with, and then come up and say, it's okay, I'll just agree with it and we'll figure it out later. And we've done that so long that I think our budget has reflected that.
So if I could interject again, that I think we have been very transparent. We've done at least four different times that we've come to the commission in public meetings and we've given a presentation of various stages within the wage study. And I'm sorry that you weren't able to attend the working sessions with the commissioners that we did, that that was getting down into the nitty gritty detail of what we've done. So anyone who was able to attend those, they saw the, the what if analysis that we did when we placed people on to the wage scale, they saw how that worked. And I'm sorry that you were not able to participate in that.
So Chair, I'd like to clarify that because, no, I'd like to tell the truth. Let me finish. Number one, I went to the first one and saw the pay bands and the job descriptions and thought they were looking very good. I said that upfront. Number two, the second one, I was canceled on because you guys were working on it. The third one, you just met with other commissioners and I haven't had anybody contact me on this and I could have contacted them, but I was going through some of these other papers when I got back from vacation. To be fair, that's why I didn't have a third session, not because I didn't want to go through the situation of what we're going through on wage scale, because I told you I wouldn't have enough time. And I don't think, as from what I seen, a lot of people had a lot of time from what I'm hearing for questions. Number two, transparency comes from public. It doesn't come from meeting with commissioners and meeting with department heads and making a wage study and saying that we're doing a wage study. When you're doing job description changes that cost taxpayers money, when you do wage scales that have not full disclosure of all the taxpayer money that was spent on this, on the wage scale and not can do a comparable on Gallagher compared to what is going on right now, so they know, just like you do, just like our department heads, that this is a great idea and that it's not going to be perfect and everything Brian said and your department head said are good, I appreciate that. But transparency, not in the private sector, is not meeting with the bosses, it's meeting with the public and the people that pay that. So these haven't been vetted through the process. I know you have some numbers, you have how people are satisfied and everything and the, how the wage study has, is trying to be implemented, but I also saw numbers keep changing. It might be implemented here, it might here, we're not ready for the job descriptions. We just talked to some people, that's not going to be ready. In full disclosure, you did the right thing by meeting with us first, but now it's the second step with all of these numbers and all these changes with employees and public and see how satisfied they believe that this wage study is. And for me, that's a huge difference. Thank you.
Okay, we need, we got four other commissioners, any other comments from commissioners? I will say thank you, Carol. And part of the process that you guys went through, I really appreciate all the staff that worked through this because it gave you an insight to not only your own departments and what was going on, but you, but also how to get to where it was and see it. I mean, you went through every job description, broke it down into four different sections to professional tradesmen and so forth, and that was a lot of work on your part. And I really appreciate that and I think you guys did the due diligence, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Our last meeting, we asked you to provide us pros and cons and I, I'm looking at that and I think you did a very good job. It's certainly going to help me make a decision today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
So Carol, you know, I've, I've followed this process, it wasn't on the compensation committee, but I followed it. I appreciated the interaction that you've had individually with commissioners, myself. I don't think there was anything that we couldn't ask and look at during that whole process. I don't think we're sitting here and should be trying to micromanage, you know, what the job descriptions are in each department for each individual, et cetera. But I also recognize that if we had asked that question, we could have seen those. It's a matter of whether or not you take the time to do it. I do have the trust in your department, I have the trust in the people that served on the compensation committee. I think it was a great job. I appreciate the, what the end result is. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I didn't want to get into weeds on the job descriptions, maybe I should have, but I do think the public should see how we're changing some stuff, 100%. I did ask for the Excel spreadsheet to be sent to me so I could kind of look at it and I don't think I ever received that because I wanted to understand some stuff. I told you all that in the last meeting that I was in. Sometimes it slips my mind after I ask for it whether or not I get things and then as we're sitting here in this particular situation, then I'm like, I never received that. So I could actually take a look at those pay bands a little bit more closely because I do better on Excel because I actually prefer to utilize Excel rather than paperwork sometimes because you can play with it, you can kind of see what happens. So I don't think that I got that information. I, I've also said, and Carol, you've, you've heard me many times, some of my concerns on this. I do believe there's some good things that are coming out of it. I don't know if it's all 100% good, I'm not going to say it's bad, I just think there needs to be a little bit more scrutiny in it before I can support it to the level that it is at, at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
So we've heard from all the commissioners. I'll make the motion to adopt the wage study, or to implement the wage study.
A second.
Moved by LaCroy, seconded by Drew.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Travis.
On that sheet, let me find it because I was looking at it, the one that we had in our packet for today that shows wage study implementation, 2.2 million dollars and then other impact, 547,000, what's that 547,000?
That is, for example, the highway funds. So it's funds outside of the general fund.
Okay, so those are funds outside of the general fund.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no?
Two.
Two, okay. Motion carries with two noes.
Thank you.
Next up, thank you, Carol. Next, that brings us to Cindy, you did the changes of the provisional of what's happened so far today.
I did give you a summary of the changes that I made on, from option one, which had the revised revenues in it, but no new FTEs.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
On that revised summary of changes, and unless I'm missing something, the highway one in there, we were talking about that before you came back down here. I don't think that's an increase of 80,000, it was a wash from what I understood, even Joe Miller came up and talked to me and said that those were road and bridge funds, they were going to be used for that, but now it's just 80,000 is still there, but it's going to a project instead of for the FTE. I just, I just want to make sure that you, when we say decrease or increase, I'm just trying to be.
I did increase that, wasn't aware when I did it, when I was working on it, sitting down here. So I did increase it, but any funds that he doesn't use are going to remain in that fund. I can reduce it if you'd like.
Gotcha.
For this particular budget, it is in there.
Okay, you're just showing us though, okay. I'm seeing what you're doing.
Any further questions for Cindy? Provisional, item number seven is physical year 2025 county budget provisional with the changes, knowing that September 3rd, 2024, 10:00 a.m., we'll have a public meeting on the budget. That's the final one, but we're going to still have it on our agenda throughout August.
Yes, we would, the motion does, would need to include.
The dates.
Those dates of those meetings.
Okay, so what that would be, would be the designate August 6th and August 20th of '24 with meetings. So this would be, help me out with a possible motion, it'd be implement for provisional budget would be option one with the.
If I can read it if.
Please do.
Okay. To approve the 2025 provisional budget in the amount of 131,414,839 and to designate August 6th and August 20th of 2024 for consideration of any and all budget changes.
Any questions? That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion by LaCroy, seconded by Ross. Discussion on the provisional. Ms. Hancock.
At this point, I won't be voting on this, I'll be voting no on this. I think you're still at the 6 million, you're playing with numbers in order to make this budget work. Usually do I understand that, but I also think we can work on the, the wage study. But now that there's a three to two vote, I don't think a lot of that's going to happen. So at this point, this is how this has been working for about two years for me on these issues and this provisional budget, if you want to discuss this with the public, I don't think, I represent my district, I guess, and the public and they haven't been okay with what we've been doing on this provisional. It is just a start in some senses, but to me, I'm not feeling like it's a start, I feel like it's a finish. So if there was more discussion, meaning I see some discussion, but not enough to drop this number down, I am not for this provisional budget. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding by our original way of estimating the reserve, this budget as it stands would be 14 and a half percent reserve, is that correct?
That is correct.
When we're normally around that 18 to 19%.
Correct.
Thank you, Cindy.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with two noes. Motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
Moved by Drew, seconded by Ross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.